Well, hello and welcome all. Before proceeding, I pay my respects to the Murrimina people as the traditional and original custodians of the lands on which we meet, and I acknowledge the continual connection of the Tasmanian Aboriginal people to the skies, land and waterways. I pay respect to elders past and present. Before we commence with tonight's council meeting, please let us all pause for a quiet moment of reflection and respect. Well, thank you, councillors. Ladies and gentlemen, please be seated. Well, good evening and welcome to the Clarence City Council meeting of Monday, the 17th of March 2025. This meeting is being broadcast live on YouTube, and what is said in this meeting is not protected by privilege, and there is a link to the agenda papers on council's website. Item three, declarations of interests of councillors or close associate. Are there any declarations of a councillor or close associate? There have been none. We move now on to the omnibus item. Item four, 4.1 is confirmation of the minutes. The minutes of the council meeting held on the 24th of February 2025 have been circulated. Are there any issues arising? There have been none. We move now on to 4.2, mayors' communication. And the first item I like to address this evening is correspondence I received from the deputy mayor, councillor Ritchie, dated the Friday, the 7th of March 2025. The deputy mayor writes, Dear Mayor Blomley, I am writing to advise I will be standing as a candidate in the upcoming legislative council election for the division of Pembroke. At the present time, polling day is scheduled for the 3rd of May 2025, and I am requesting the council approve an application for leave from my position as councillor and deputy mayor for the period of the 17th of March until the 3rd of May 2025. I also advise I will forego my council allowance for the period of leave if approved by the council, and trust this advice provides all the necessary clarity for council and the community on my position for the election period. I invite you to contact me should you require any additional information. Thank you for your assistance with my request. Yours sincerely councillor Alison Ritchie, Deputy Mayor. And I thank the deputy mayor for her correspondence. I wish her well in her campaign. Consistent with our rules, her application seeking a leave of absence will be considered in the closed section of tonight's meeting, and I table a copy of the deputy mayor's correspondence. The second item this evening, colleagues, as some of you may be aware, the recent Tasmanian Football Hall of Fame dinner, how resident Mr Trevor Leo was elevated to icon status. Now, Mr Leo is legendary in both football and academic circles, and it was fitting that his significant contribution to Australian rules football in our state was recognised by this highest of accolades. On behalf of the city, I write to congratulate Mr Leo, and I know how to table a copy of that correspondence as well. Thank you, sir. As colleagues are aware, there has recently been a change to the Provider of Council's Fitness in the Park Programme. Since inception, this popular programme has been run by Ms Sherry Ring of Energy Health Concepts, and I would like to take this opportunity to thank publicly Ms Ring and her dedicated team for their wonderful efforts over the past 14 years, and wish them well in their future endeavours. Early this month, I also received a letter from the president of the Derwent Storms Dragon Boat Club, Ms Marianne Stevenson. Ms Stevenson writes, Dear Mayor Blomley, on behalf of the Derwent Storms Dragon Boat Club, Inc., I would like to thank Clarence City Council for the funding our club received through council's community grants programme. As specified in our application, we have used this funding to purchase a suite of personal flotation devices, PFDs or life jackets, to use with school and other community groups who wish to come and try dragon boating. A first school programme has been booked for the 27th of March, weather permitting. We are looking forward to sharing our sport with come and try participants and providing them with the opportunity to experience firsthand the health and wellbeing benefits of dragon boating. Thank you for council support in helping our club to promote dragon boating to the broader community. Kind regards, Marianne Stevenson. I thank Ms Stevenson for her letter and table that, and on her behalf, I also extend her invitation to try dragon boating to any and all interested parties, including councillors. As colleagues will note from my circulated diary entries, that will be formally tabled shortly, I recently met with senior officers of the Australian, oh sorry, the Royal Australian Air Force, including the commanding officer of number 36 Squadron, group captain Stephen Moneypenny, and the senior Tasmanian RAF officer wing commander Nicholas Fairweather. In summary, in November last year, the then commander of 36 Squadron wrote to me seeking to commence a relationship between the city of Clarence and 36 Squadron. As colleagues may be aware, 36 Squadron is the home of the Boeing C-17A Globemaster, an impressive plane that I was invited to tour, that supports the Australian Antarctic Division through resupply missions to both Casey and Morrison stations. A Soibut International Airport is a gateway for 36 Squadron C-17s. The view is that there may be mutual benefits for both parties if we were to formalise our relationship. However, I will say that at this stage, we are at what the RAF term as scoping and framing stage. It is early days, and of course, consideration of a formal relationship would require both the chief of the air force and this council providing our respective approvals. On a positive note, our discussions did secure 36 Squadron making flyovers for this ANZAC date. On this matter, I will keep colleagues informed as discussions progress. However, I stress that I am told that this will be by small steps, and as each and every step will require approval, as we appreciate, from the chain of command. Pleasingly, the Minister for Defence, the Honourable Richard Malz, MP, also the Deputy Prime Minister, has been pleased to provide his in principle support, which is encouraging. But colleagues, I've saved the best until last. I'm delighted to inform colleagues that at a ceremony in Launceston earlier this month, our very own councillor Heather Chong was inducted into the Tasmanian Honour Roll of Women. It is always pleasing to see those who so selflessly give themselves a range, across a range of fields, be acknowledged for their achievements and lasting impact on others. So councillor Chong, on behalf of our grateful city, congratulations on an accolade so very well deserved. Now moving on to 4.2.7 diary entries, my diary entries from the 25th of February through to the 17th of March, and I would particularly like to thank councillor Kennedy for representing me at councillor Chong's induction into the Tasmanian Honour Roll of Women. It wasn't possible for me to go to Launceston, but it didn't take much convincing for councillor Kennedy to be there to represent council. So councillor Kennedy, thank you very much as always. 4.3, council workshops as listed in the agenda. 4.4, tabling a petition. CEO, are there any petitions?
No, ma'am.
Thank you, CEO. 4.5, reports from outside bodies. The first would be the Copping Refuge Disposal Site Joint Authority. Councillor Walker, would you like to comment at this time?
I think the report speaks for itself. It's quite voluminous compared to updates past.
Thank you, councillor Walker. And I understand there's nothing to report for Tazwaith South, councillor Warren, also nothing for either Tazwater or the Greater Hobart Committee. Moving now on to reports from council and special committees and other representative bodies. Firstly, as Chair of the City Development Advisory Committee, I table the minutes as attached to the agenda. Also on the agenda are the draft minutes of the Cultural Creative Advisory Committee. Are there any other reports for tabling tonight? There have been none. We now move on to the weekly briefing reports. Colleagues, the weekly briefing reports of the 24th of February and the 3rd and 10th of March 2025 have been circulated to councillors. Are there any matters arising? Councillor James?
Chairman, I refer to the weekly briefing report of the 3rd of March 2025 in relation to the Black Spot Programme funding on page four of that report, and it refers to amongst other things, 870 to 934 Acton Road, Acton Park, the improvement between 870 and 934 Acton Road, Acton Park. This has been part of the council's submission for federal government funding, and as you can see in that report, that council's contribution was 50 and the grant amount was 190. So my question is, will that be adequate to actually have that work done? And my question through you to the appropriate officer for an answer, please.
Thank you, councillor James. Mr Graham, please.
Through you, Mr Mayor. I certainly believe from my team that the funding is adequate. We are putting in the, it is noted on there, the council contribution that is proposed for discussion in the 2526 budget to approve.
Thank you, Mr Graham. Councillor James?
In relation to one of these projects that I did put a motion for at one stage in relation to Beach Road and Malana Road Lindisfarne intersection upgrade, I may say that the people that were adversely affected by vehicles that had crashed through the front fence of that property have in despair sold and left. But nevertheless, in this particular case, black spot funding has been provided. Council's contribution is 245,000. The grant amount was 450,000, which makes a grand sum of total project amount of 695. So my question through you, Mr Chairman, to the appropriate officer, will 695 basically cover this very important intersection, which has been on our council books for at least 12 to 18 months? Will that cover the work?
Thank you, councillor James. Mr Graham, to you again, please.
Through you, Mr Mayor. That is our understanding of the estimate for construction, yes.
Thank you, Mr Graham. Councillor James?
Flagstaff Gully Road feasibility study update. I refer to page three, and I refer to council's decision that we made in this place back in 1986, at which we sought, and the council resolution at the time was that we would support the Flagstaff Gully Road connection between Flagstaff Gully Road and the East Derwent Highway. Council hired at the time, or consulted with, a consultant, and they came up with a number of options in relation to that. This is disappointing from the Department of State Growth, because they say amongst other things that the proposed, hang on, the study showed that the options for the proposed route currently do not provide significant benefits to the area, excuse me, an overall road network. In turn, the proposed route is currently not considered feasible. So where do we go from here? I know there are a number of colleagues around this table that have sought some connection in relation to this, and given the federal government's support for upgrades to on-off ramps, as well as the Mornington Road intersection, I would suggest at another time we make application or consider, that we make application or pass a resolution or endorse our current position in relation to this.
So is there a question there, councillor James, or just a suggestion?
Well, actually, basically council's decision is to support this, and I would suggest that we consider.
It might be more appropriate, in order to get traction here, to maybe consider bringing a motion on notice to this place, to get a formal council position.
We do have one on the books. We do have one on the books.
Yeah, yeah, and we've got a response here from the Department of State Growth. All right, so you've just read it out. So maybe you might like to consider bringing a motion on notice. And other colleagues here, a number of us, are of a similar view, but let's think strategically how we can progress this and lobby the appropriate people to get some action. Mr Graham?
Through you, Mr Mayor. It might be worth value for me to provide a memo on the background behind this, because council's last decision in 2010 or 2012, from memory, was not to proceed with the land rezoning at that time to allow for a future traffic corridor. So understanding the potential benefit of a notice of motion, but if I provide council with the background behind this.
It'd be a great pleasure. Thank you, Mr Graham. Councillor Mulder, you wish to speak on the, on these weekly briefing reports?
I pick up the same issue, but I have a direct question. Apart from a letter telling us that the likely usage wasn't to do anything, was it wasn't to be anything, have we received the actual assessment that the Department of State Growth conducted, upon which it bases what are basically ludicrous claims?
So you're wanting the actual study?
Yes, Mr Mayor, and I can foreshadow, as being on this hobby horse, that that would be a valuable piece of information, to have the actual report, rather than, I mean, how do we know it wasn't just a desktop exercise? You know, when there were all these consultants' reports that this council commissioned, which demonstrated it was a viable and useful thing. So I just foreshadowed that notion, but my question is, have we ever seen the proper assessment report, considering the fact that we gave council, that we gave the Department of State Growth, or hopefully we did, the Global Value Management Report, which identified six various options, and also the ratio analysis, which demonstrated that there was a cost benefit return of around about $3 for every dollar spent? Those reports are matters of public record, and I'm happy to table them again in case they've been lost in the thing, but how can you make that decision with that thing? So my question is, is can we access that report?
Mr Graham?
Through you, Mr Mayor. No, we haven't seen the report, but yes, we can request a copy.
Thank you very much.
Go to Department of State Growth and see if we may obtain a copy.
Thank you. But councillor James, before I call on you again, please take a seat. Is there any other colleagues? Take a seat. Take a seat, councillor James. I'm just asking if anyone else wants to go by first. You've had a go. Now, maybe we'll, but, oh, councillor Hume, thank you.
I'll have a go, Mayor, thank you. Just following on from councillor Mulder's question, I'd just like to ask, because I think it's relevant to the points he raised about those reports from council, whether the department has actually sought council's input into this exercise.
Thank you, councillor Hume. Mr Graham, please.
Through you, Mr Mayor. We provided Department of State Growth with all the copies of the reports we'd had at the time, and some of our staff members were involved as a stakeholder during some of the criteria analysis, but those, a couple of those member staff have left now, and that was a number of years ago, when that, those meetings were undertaken.
Thank you, Mr Graham. Councillor Walker?
He's the same one. I will try and be brief. Given council's decision of 2012 was to explicitly rule out a road reservation, a rather interesting decision that council came to after the previous consultation it commenced on, just asking that, requesting that the brief provided by Mr Graham perhaps includes the full report that councillor Mulder was referring to, with which this council, to both reports, yeah, just requesting that they can, they can be hyperlinked in the, in the details that he provides, please.
Thank you, councillor Walker. Mr Graham, we're happy to do that. Thank you very much. Councillor James?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. This is in relation to the weekly briefing report of the 10th of March, and it's the outcome of the appeal against council's decision of 23 Sabre Place in Sanford. On page 17 of the weekly briefing report, it says amongst other things, the revision, this is the decision, this is the memo from our head of planning, referring to TasCAT's decision on the visitor accommodation for two units at 23 Sabre Place Sanford. In paragraph four of the actual officer's summary, he says, the revision involves the deletion of one of the two proposed visitor accommodation units. The tribunal considered the application, the grounds of appeal, the proposed terms of settlement, and submissions by council was satisfied that the proposed settlement is not inconsistent with any of the act. So my question is, the original planning permit on the 6th of May included two units in this particular development, and when it was taken to appeal, the tribunal, TasCAT, referred to amongst other things, one of the main matters was the deletion of one of the two units. So my question is, would that be a term that this council could consider in relation to a motion of one unit only and not two, or would it be contrary to that, because we would have to take the application on two units, and therefore we couldn't, by the very nature of the planning authority, make a recommendation, that is a motion from the floor, to have one unit only on this, on this development?
Mr Ma?
Through you, Mayor. Thank you, councillor James, for the question. If I think, I think I understand you correctly, councillor James, you're saying, in the future, if there's an application for two units, are we able to delete one and come up with a recommendation for one only? The answer is, it depends, and it will depend on the nature of the application. In this case, the tribunal turned their mind to that, and it's on page one of their reasons for decision. Now, the tribunal's criteria are slightly different from ours in terms of their ability to consider this. They're governed by a different act. Whilst they are subject to the planning scheme, they do have other criteria in their decision making. And this is an interesting point the councillor James has raised. The, for a similar application, we would obviously consider this as a non-binding precedent, which tribunal decisions are. In this case, the application through a consent was proposed to have one of the units taken away, so it's not, it's not in a, an argument. All parties agreed to this, and the tribunal turned their mind of, were that, was they able to consider that on the basis of it was a consent agreement, which is a bit different from council imposing a condition when someone doesn't want that condition to be imposed. But to sum up, sorry for rambling, councillor James, yes, it is a potential for a similar type of application for council to turn their mind to.
Thank you, Mr Ma. Are there any other matters pertaining to the weekly briefing reports? All right. I note that we're at the end of our omnibus items. Can I please have a mover? Thank you, councillor Chong. The second, councillor Warren. I'll put the motion, all those in favour. Let's now, thank you, colleagues. Moving now on to item number five, public question time. There are three questions on notice, one from Mr Thomas Chick, and two from Mr Bradley Walker. 5.2, I'll ask the CEO, please, to provide the answers to the questions, public questions on notice. Thank you, CEO.
Thank you, Mayor. The first two questions come from Mr Thomas Chick. In, Mr Chick writes, we recently received a mail out from the deputy mayor, councillor Ritchie, advertising several community council meetings in May, August and November. On both sides of the flyer, in the top right corner, Clarence's logo is printed, which, along with the name used for the events, implies a connection between council and these meetings that may not actually exist. Mr Chick's first question is, does council have any involvement in these community council meetings, or are they organised entirely on the deputy mayor's initiative? The answer to that question is that the community meetings are organised by the deputy mayor at her initiative. Second question is, if council is not involved, is the use of council logo to advertise events personally organised by individual councillors, such as this, authorised? And the answer to that question is that the use of council logo in this instance is permitted by council's use of council arms slash logo policy. The next two questions come from Mr Bradley Walker, and the first question is, what is council's total current holding in cash in lieu of public open space contributions, and how does council assess where to utilise these funds and whether it involves community input when such purchases arise? The answer to that question is that council's 2023/24 annual report states that the balance of the public open space reserve was $3.321 million, as at the 30th of June 2024. Council's public open space policy states that utilisation of the public open space fund is to be directed towards longer term strategic land acquisitions and capital improvements of major facilities, rather than capital improvements of current assets. Community consultation may be involved in the planning of long term strategic assets, such as the Clarence City Council's City Heart Plan. However, these projects are fu, sorry, however, how these projects are funded does not involve public consultation. The second question is, does council obtain either in-house or external professional planners' report before commencing legal proceedings for potential breaches of the Land Use Planning and Approvals Act? And the answer to that question is that council may engage internal and or external planning advice with such determination being on a case by case basis.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, CEO. Moving now on to 5.3, answers previous questions taken on. Moving now on to five point three, answers previous questions taken on notice, is listed in the agenda, five point four questions without notice, are there any questions from the gallery this evening? I acknowledge Mr O'Draviny's in the gallery this evening, a former recipient of, Citizen of the Year, so welcome Mr O'Draviny this evening, no questions? Very kind of you. Moving now onto item six, deputations from members of the public, CEO, are there any deputations this evening? Thank you, mayor, no, there are no deputations this evening. Thank you very much. Moving on to item number seven, planning items, there, there are none, moving on to eight point, eight point two, eight point one, sorry, determination of petitions, there are none there either, thank you, eight point two, eight point two point one, Tasman Highway, Hobart Airport to Midway Point revised concept, there's a recommendation before us this evening, I'll call for a mover of the recommendation, please. Thank you councillor Hunter, is there a second? Thank you deputy mayor, councillor Hunter.
Yes, thank you, Mr Mayor, I think this is fairly straightforward, we've workshopped it, I would like to note that I'm pleased that councillor Warren suggested in, one of the points in point B, that the state growth needs to ensure the sustainability of threatened species related to the Tasman Highway upgrade west of the Midway Point causeway, which I know is a concern of some of us, I'm pleased to see that there. This motion has my support and I think that of my colleagues.
Thank you councillor Hunter, deputy mayor councillor Ritchie, please.
Nothing further to add, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, any other colleagues wishing to make a contribution this evening, councillor James?
Just on a, on a question, I was under the impression, Mr Mayor, that councillor Warren had a suggestion and that was to delete the word sustainability and insert prohibited. And I thought that was agreed to at our, our meeting on, on Friday and if so, I'm just, may I pass the question?
Councillor James, no, no, as, as you know, up to your three decades of experience as a motion before the chair. You've been here for 40 years, have you?
Forty, just about.
We might fact check that, but anyway.
Yes, you can check it, all right. You can see up on the board, one, two, three. And there's an earlier date up there, if you have a good look, Mr Mayor.
The gift that keeps on giving, thank you councillor James for your service.
My humble apologies, yes.
But, yeah, thank you and, and you do know better, so if there was to be an amendment, the amendment should have been put, but I think councillor Hunter, in her opening remarks, dealt quite adequately with that and knowing as we all do councillor Warren, councillor Warren's very capable of speaking for herself, so thank you very much. Councillor Warren.
Thank you, Mr Mayor and thank you councillor James for drawing my attention to that. I have been looking in my inbox over the last couple of days because I was under the impression that the CEO was going to deliver alternative words, which didn't, what, rather than ensuring sustainability, protected threatened species, I think were the words that we discussed on Friday, because my concern with this is that the, ensuring sustainability are words that state growth has used, which may involve the possible relocation of threatened species, which is not an acceptable outcome.
Councillor Warren, thank you, so could I then, just, just, and please, no, no need to stand here, if I can look at that dot point, the B dot point three, just to make sure I've got this correct, that it would now read, you're moving this amendment?
Perhaps the CEO could just remind us of the words that he suggested on Friday.
I'm going to read them out because he's just provided them to me, so I'll chair the meeting, thank you councillor Warren. And that is that the Department of State Growth needs to ensure the protection rather than sustainability of threatened species related to the Tasman Highway upgrade west of the Midway Point causeway. That's what we had written down on Friday.
Okay, that's fine, thank you.
All right, so just, just one moment, please, is that acceptable to the mover? Thank you, and the second? Thank you, that now becomes the motion. To those watching at home, we don't yet have the capacity to provide a, an alternate motion to you, but I'll just read that again, which is dot point, which is B dot point three, it now reads that the Department of State Growth needs to ensure the protection instead of sustainability of threatened species related to the Tasman Highway upgrade west of the Midway Point causeway and the rest of the recommendation remains the same. So councillor Warren, thank you for that, anyone else wishing to make a contribution? Councillor Walker, thank you.
Yeah, look, I will be supporting this motion and it's, it's good that the, you know, the west side is now being acknowledged, I think it's important to note that historically, when council first was considering matters to do with the expansion of the road in this area, it explicitly asked that it all, that all the development basically happened on the west side and, and none of it on the east side and, and I didn't agree with that at the time and I think that that approach initially did cause some needless discomfort and, and wasn't the best strategic way forward, but it seems to have evolved over time, it is necessary that this bit of roadway expands and I wish for council to, yeah, support it and that it happened.
Thank you councillor Walker, anyone else wishing to make a contribution? Councillor Mulder, thank you.
I note that this particular area doesn't include the bit between the airport interchange and the actual causeway, as I understood. The chief executive officer has already acknowledged that, that, that's that little, that's it, so it's a missing link between there and then. I also understand that the Department of State Growth has a different model and approach, but they don't think they need to come back to council with a planning approval. I'd just like to, as discussed at the workshops recently, I'd just like to, to have that on the public record and express my concern about the accesses on that middle link as I've done in previous cases. And in terms of that threatened species and the protection thereof, the other side of the road is the golf course. And the golf course has a significant, that stretch has no golf playing on it and it would take very little effort to actually change the alignment from where it, from its car alignment and, and, and to the golf course, which is what the purpose of councillor Warren's amendment is, which is actually that alignment would cause no problems to the wildlife, to the threatened species, it would be a, probably a better use of that road, avoiding some of the bends and twists as we go towards that. So I, I have, I make those points and, and I'll be supporting the motion because of that, so I'm adding some context to it, but I really would like on the public record to, to have an explanation as to what is the change, proposed change in the middle road and why does the Department of State Growth think that it can continue to change its alignment as it did with the overpass, the interchange at the airport, without coming back to council with a different, with a revised plan? What's the point of council sitting here doing a planning, as a planning, looking at planning issues and, and road alignments if the state government just thinks, bang, well, we'll do what we want to do anyway? So I just wonder, so those questions are there.
Thank you, Mr Graham or Mr Ma, thank you.
Through you, mayor. Thank you councillor for the question. This matter's been in discussion with DSG with regard to that missing link, which under the current permit that was issued several years, several years ago, for the section involving the intersection with Pitwater Road, from our understanding that permit has now lapsed, under the planning scheme, any construction of the road outside of a road reserve requires a permit, which is what they applied for last time, we don't see that anything has changed, that's certainly been our discussion. If DSG have a alternative opinion as to why they don't need a permit, then I'm yet to see that. And I note that it would be exactly the same with this section and that if you have a look at their timeline on their consultation documents, it talks about coming back to council to seek the appropriate permits at a later date following concept design rationalisation. So they, they don't appear to be making such a claim with the current consultation based on their documentation.
Thank you, Mr Ma.
So that's a like and officer.
Councillor Mulder.
And, and might I say, as a, on a peripheral point, this will speed up the expected 20% I think, Mr Mayor, was your, your press release some time ago about when the Tasman Bridge wasn't being upgraded, that there's something like 20% potential increase in traffic to the Tasman Bridge? And can I tell you now, as a residents of Richmond would know, there's a huge rat run from Sorrel to Richmond and then over, over the, over the treacherously steep and winding road, and I use those words carefully because they are the words they used as to why the, the Flagstaff Gully Link couldn't go through. And what would be if we could actually get the Flagstaff Gully Link to pick up that extra traffic coming through this dual carriageway highway and divert it from the Tasman Bridge through Flagstaff Gully Link to the Bowen Bridge and thereby save that dangerous and treacherous Gordon's Hill Road and going through the heart of our premier Georgian tourist town, which was never built to take 21st century motor vehicles? So these are the issues that we need to take a broader view and, and I look forward to hammering these points when we bring this motion and shake the state government out of its complacency.
Any other colleagues wishing to talk on this matter? There being none, councillor Hunter, you write a reply to, thank you.
Yes, well, if we want to start talking about bigger picture here, wouldn't it be great to reduce the number of vehicles on the road overall so we didn't need to expand causeway and roads? But saying that, thank you for the discussion and for my colleagues for noting the indiscriminacy in that dot point three of item B, I think that's an improvement which I'm happy to support and I seek colleagues' support.
Thank you councillor Hunter, I'll put the amended motion, all those in favour. That's unanimous, thank you colleagues, moving now on to eight point three, financial management, there are none, on to eight point four governance, eight point four point one, the quarterly report to, to 31st of December 2024, the recommendation is that the quarterly report be received, I'll call for a mover of the motion, please. Thank you councillor James, a second, thank you councillor Kennedy, councillor James.
Nothing to add this time except seek council support.
Thank you councillor Kennedy. Thank you, any other colleagues wishing to make a comment on the quarterly report? There being none, I'll put the motion, all those in favour. So received, that's unanimous, thank you very much. Moving now on to eight point four point two, which is a local government electoral discussion paper, councillor Hume, I understand you have an alternate motion that's been circulated?
Indeed, and I seek a second.
Is there a second for councillor Hume's alternate motion? It is on the screen, so people at home are able to see this, is there a second? Councillor Hunter, thank you, councillor Hume.
Thank you, mayor, and I thank councillor Hunter for seconding the motion. I would ask if it's okay that the, under part B of the motion, that the points one, two and three be taken ad surratum? And the reason I'm requesting you allow that is because they are sort of separate points that I think, you know, it'd be a shame for one of them to fail for the sake of lack of support for any of the others.
So councillor Hume, I'll just confirm that there'll be a number of motions tonight that I'll take ad surratum, so, but thank you for requesting, happy to do so.
Thank you, mayor. Look, I just, I want to congratulate the officers on an excellent report, getting agreement on all these matters as we manage to in the workshop is like herding cats. I, I mean, I, I don't necessarily agree entirely with every position we took in the workshop, but I chose these, these three matters to progress because that, you know, the, the things are particularly important to me and as you know, in relation to point one about the, the threshold for elective polls, that's something that I brought a motion to this place on and, you know, certainly keen to support the, the state government's position in relation to that. But before I get to that one, I'm going to just talk briefly about the other two. So point two, Reform 33, which included the elector poll threshold, actually had another element to that, which was to say that an elector poll be restricted to matters with a legitimate connection to the exercise of a council's functional powers or to the incorporation of the council as determined by the council. So what that's basically saying is, an elector poll will only be held on matters for which the council is actually responsible, things that the council can make decisions on and have control over. And I think that's, that's quite sensible. And the third one, I, I've actually, back in my first term, I moved a motion in council that resulted in us taking a position and we took that position to Legatt and Legatt also endorsed that position, which is that just like all state parliamentarians and all federal parliamentarians in both houses of parliament, elected representatives in council can have access to the electoral role for their local government area, incumbent councillors, not just candidates. Now, the reason why, why candidates get access to the electoral role and the reason why parliamentarians get access to it during their term, I think all those reasons extend to, to councillors. It wasn't canvassed in the discussion paper, but, but it is something I think we should put forward because it does help us in our communication as elected representatives. Turning now to point one of the motion, as I've said before, I think 2.2% of electors, as in the case of Clarence, is far too low a threshold for, for forcing an elector poll. I don't believe that one rate payer should force that expense on another 45 for something that is basically a non-binding outcome. Just to give an example, in the recent elector poll on the High Performance Centre, we had people calling on the council before the poll was concluded to respect the outcome of the poll, but then calling on council to take a different position when the outcome in relation to Rosney Parklands didn't suit their agenda. But what, what we ended up with was a very expensive opinion poll following which, no, nothing really changed in terms of the position, but then the decision ended up being taken out of our hands by the Tasmanian government's flawed decision on that location anyway. I, I don't think there is a lot of value in elector polls, but I, I, yeah, I believe that if there is going to be a threshold and we are going to allow them to be forced, then that threshold needs to be at much higher. I have heard people talk about the difficulty in organising large number of electors. I'm sure I could organise a thousand electors to sign a petition on just about anything if I looked hard enough and, and this is something that I understand, you know, has, has been weaponised with people threatening elector polls if council doesn't adhere to the position that they want them to take. Now, if you do have a, a 20% threshold and there is difficulty within that timeframe organising that 20%, then, then why not extend the timeframe? Thank you.
Councillor Hunter.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and thanks to you councillor Hume for bringing this alternative motion, I'm happy to second it to get it on the table and have the discussion. I am pleased that each of the items will be voted on separately because there will be varying opinions here. I think item B two makes sense, of course, we should only be concerning ourselves with electoral polls that are related to council matters, I don't think anyone would disagree with that. I'm also happy to support B three, because when I was running for council, I thought that would be very advantageous and once I realised it was available to other levels of government, it didn't make sense that we didn't have access to that and now as an elected representative, there are matters I would like to talk to residents about, but I have no way of accessing communication with them unless I go and knock on the door, which sometimes that isn't always appropriate. I do question item B one, I do agree with councillor Hume that the threshold may be inadequate as it currently stands, however, I haven't resolved within myself what the appropriate changes would be and I'm not quite sure at this stage that I'm happy with 20%. That's something I might be happy to revisit at a later time or. Um, that's something I might be happy to revisit at a later time or flesh out some different alternatives. Ideally, it's something the local, uh, state government would consider reviewing as well. Uh, so I will be supporting B two and B three, but keen to hear what my colleagues feel about item B one.
Thank you councillor Hunter. Councillor Mulder?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I have some concerns about, um, one and two. Twenty percent is way too much. It's ten thousand, over ten thousand voters, uh, ten thousand, um, ratepayers, it's not ratepayers, electors, have to sign a petition. It's a high margin. And if you look around, the number of times we have elector polls, it came as a shock to most of us, I think, to realise that the High Performance Centre was a fifty-fifty split. And I think, given the magnitude of the issue, the amount of campaigning that was done, some by, you know, by some around this table as well, um, it was an important point of having your say. One thousand might be quite easy, um, to get in these days of electronic signatures, but ten thousand? Really? You know, it's too much. And how often are these things held, you know? Once a term if you're unlucky? And tell me, it's the same cost. Our current arrangements under the thing says that if a mayor resigns because he's got himself another job or he wants to do something differently, we go out to a whole poll. No one suggests we have a recount of his last election. No, no, no. When it comes to our positions, we're happy to roll on and go to a, you know, a, a full-blown electors poll. And these are the things, like, I can probably suggest, I, I, and, and on point two, um, you know, happy with it all the way through and then the comma, as determined by council. If you want me to support this, you're going to take that way. In other words, we control when an electors poll is issued as determined by us. Since when, you know, since when did prosecutors judge their own cases? And that's the point. So I can't support two because of those words. And I would suggest that, um, if you want my support for point two, I would suggest an amendment and that delete the words as determined by council. So I put that as an amendment.
Is it acceptable to the mover?
That's acceptable.
To the seconda?
Uh, I do please repeat.
And that is, uh, the last, dot B, uh, two, as determined by councillors removed.
One words.
One, two, three, four, five, the last five words.
Can you have your...
Okay, that now becomes a motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Um, and, and the last one, um, yes, I, I agree with that. In fact, I think, um, if you recall, it was my suggestion. Um, the other point is that, um, I would also say, but it's not here and I don't intend to move a motion, is that, um, members of parliament actually have access to the land information systems in Tasmania. So in other words, we can, they can find out who a landowner is of a particular property. And I find that sort of thing would be very valuable to me as we're going around trying to work out, um, you know, as we're doing our functions as a councillor. So, um, I, I don't even propose to move it, but, um, maybe we could take note of that on the way through. Um, but as, but I'll just go back to my initial point, I think twenty percent is just an incredibly high number, um, it's unsustainable, um, and, um, and, uh, in the end, just, just how many people, you know, do you need to, to have an electors poll? I, I think elector polls are great. I wish our constitution was that, you know, and, and our governance arrangements were actually taken out of the power of the parliament of the day and that actually citizens-initiated referendum are the way we should be changing the way we're governed. I mean, here we are, all benefits of the current system and you're asking us to change it? Hardly. So I think that, you know, as a citizens-initiated referendum, I'm all for elector polls, um, I'm all for the people having a say. Um, in our case, no, it shouldn't be binding because it's about a particular issue. But my word, I think it should be binding if it was about the system of governance, about the Local Government Act, about things like that, that should be binding. But, um, as citizens-initiated referendum, um, no, you know, go for it, um, I, I don't, you know, rarely does an issue get up to the point where, um, it, it gets to the high end and, uh, and the High Performance Centre, and as I've said, uh, many times, um, most of us were gobsmacked by the fact that it was a fifty-fifty split. So why wouldn't we have found that out? Why wouldn't we have asked a thousand people to come up with a thing to have their say? Have their say. Listen to the people.
Thank you. Councillor, um, councillor Chong, please. Thank you.
Um, like others, I'm happy to support B two as amended and B three, um, as, and also as somebody else said, I think twenty percent is too high a proportion. I think the five percent that we got to our discussion in the workshop is probably about right. Um, I do think a thousand is too low. It's very easy in these days of electronic signatures to, to grab a thousand people who don't always pay a great deal of attention to what they're signing. Um, I think increasing that to five percent does give you a better capacity to get a real view of what happens.
Thank you councillor Chong. Councillor Kennedy, please.
Uh, thank you, Mr Mayor, and like, um, previous speakers and colleagues, um, I agree with two and three and, um, through you would like to ask the mover if he would look at decreasing one.
Uh, we could look... I don't know, I don't know if we're going to come to a consensus.
All right, no, the motion is the motion. If you're not prepared to consider an amendment, so, thank you councillor Kennedy. I, always a peacemaker, thank you. Um, uh, anyone else wishing to... Councillor James, thank you. Oh, sorry, sorry, councillor Warren, did you... And if you prefer to do it for your chair, feel free to do that tonight. All right, thank you.
Um, like my colleagues, I'm not comfortable with part one. Um, part two is okay. Part three, speaking as a ratepayer, um, if the council wants to contact me, the council has the ability to do that. I'm not keen on being harangued by, um, twelve councillors individually on matters that are of interest to them. I would prefer to only be contacted on whole of council matters, so I won't be supporting part three either.
Thank you councillor Warren. Uh, councillor Darker, thank you.
Just to get it on the record, I agree with what's been said before, twenty percent is way too high and I'm actually happy with the status quo on that one, but, yeah, otherwise happy with two, one, three.
Thank you. Councillor James?
So thank you, and I'll read from the, uh, from the board there. Um, my view is, and, uh, I will not support anything that has been suggested in the way of twenty percent, five percent I won't go. I'm for the status quo. I made that point quite clear when we had this discussed at the, um, at the workshop. Simple fact of the matter is that it takes a lot of effort for people to actually set up a committee and organise themselves and go out and run a public meeting, get a thousand signatures for that, and then to go ahead, and they may not get the same a thousand people that actually called or supported at the public meeting, to go out and do the, the pedalwork to get another thousand signatures. I'm for maintaining the status quo and I will not support number one. Number two, the word supports proposal to restrict. Once you start putting words, okay, we took out the words as determined, okay? But that doesn't read as well as what I would have liked it to read. Uh, but this is basically saying council supports to restrict matters about which an elector poll may be held to matters with legitimate connection. So we are determining what is legitimate in relation to whether or not elector poll ought to proceed, to exercise, uh, to the exercise of council's functions or power or to the incorporation of the council. That is basically saying that council will determine what elector poll may be held or determined on the basis that the council does not, uh, agree that it's a legitimate matter and also the powers or to the incorporation of the council. They determine what we actually have to do as a council, as the elected representatives of the people. So there's too many ifs and buts and restrictions and legitimate, okay, determined is, is a good one to have out, but it still does not make it in the hands of the people, but more so it's in council's determination whether or not to support an elector poll.
So councillor, councillor James, it's been removed from, that's how long we're in the motion. As a term by council, as a term by the council, those five words of dot point B two have been removed.
That's right. I, yes, I, I understand that and I said that, but I'm referring to the other words in there, Mr Mayor, to restrict, uh, and matters legitimate, that's another word that I believe is, is, um, unnecessary and inappropriate and also the functions or powers or to the incorporation of the council. Incorporation of the council, another word which takes it out of the hands of the people. Finally, I think I've got a few seconds left, council supports a further proposal not to canvass discussion that encompasses, uh, that councillors are given access to elector role for their, during their term. I don't agree with that. I do not agree with it and I've never, never had the need to use it. If people want to contact you, if you have an issue or if you want to go and door-knock, and I've done that many times, knock on the door and if there is some, uh, uh, activity within the community or there's a footpath and there's a petition that's circulating, then you go and out there and make, make contact, but you will not use that, uh, that, um, uh, elector role, even though it says on legitimate council businesses with appropriate legislative protections against councillors' misuse. Who's going to police that? Who's going to police that? So look, I'm no, no and no.
Right, uh, councillor Walker?
Thank you. Um, so the intent of, I, I, whilst I appreciate these three extra points that have been put in there, um, where I'm Machiavellian, I would have put some points like this if I wanted to distract from the, the main bit of the meal, which was, uh, the whole bit of our report. Um, I would say that's not what the case is here and whilst there's plenty of things that, uh, aren't quite to my calibration in, in our report, I'm happy to send it through. Uh, when it comes to issues like attendance voting, um, this was brought up over a decade ago, um, by the Hobart City Council and one of their key rationales for both that and compulsory voting was, well, that's how it's done at the state and federal level and we're important too, um, which I didn't find entirely convincing. Interestingly, in Victoria, councils were able to choose between postal or attendance and postal voting tended to have high rates of responses. Um, and separate to that, um, there's a lot of words in the statements and there's a lot of candidates to choose from. Uh, I actually think the ability to sit down at your table, uh, put on whatever mood music you need and, and pour a very stiff drink while you get through the process is, uh, much more civilised than just only having one day to, to get it done in attendance voting. So it will probably be cheaper for council to conduct attendance voting, but I don't actually think it increases the franchise. And if wonks want to go back to see the jump in participation when, um, former councillor here and then minister for local government, um, the Honourable John Cleary introduced this reform, you'll see that the rates increased markedly with postal voting. Getting on to some of the matters, uh, that have been listed here, uh, no, surprisingly, I don't support B point one. Um, I think that in the entirety of councillor James's career, there hasn't actually been an elector poll, uh, while he's been on council. I think the last time Clarence had one preceded his time here. They are a rare event in our community. Maybe if they became more frequent, um, there might be cause for pause, but I think the community is quite judicious with this and, uh, it, I thought when, uh, the Save Rosney Parks brought this forward, it was going to be an act of self-harm, the response, uh, I was wrong. I was wrong as far as the response to the, to the, to the elector poll. Um, but I actually think that the ability for an elector poll to be called is a way to keep, you know, it's, it's, it's a one check and balance mechanism that members of the community have between electoral terms. So I think it should stay in place and, and again, my understanding was the final straw for the community was when the modest request to just have a conversation about Blunston Arena as part of the mix was, um, not supported by this council. That's what set the ball in motion as far as the, uh, elector poll went. In relation to B point two, Mayor, I may try and convince my colleague next to me about the merits of supporting this. Uh, I'll go back to nineteen ninety-three when Robin Hood Prince of Thieves was still a fairly recent movie and I can tell you if someone had come round to my house, and again, in ninety-three, I was an elector, not a ratepayer, but an elector, if someone had come round to my house with a motion calling on Clarence Council to demand an apology from Canada for Bryan Adams, I probably would have, I probably would have supported it. Um, and there is no level of mo, there's no, there is no comfort around what can be brought forward to an elector poll and the, the elements for mischief and the thresholds and barriers have gone right down in this space. Uh, and also even for other motions, I dislike council, local government being the chamber for prosecuting worldwide events. I, I, and I think that this, this amendment cuts that down and focuses on to our core and gives the community still that ability to, to keep a check and balance on, on matters between elections. So I will be supporting it as it's now been amended and I also, uh, thank councillor Mulder for, for making that amended and suggesting it. Um, as far as point three goes, I, I think it's legitimate. I mean, a, anybody that wishes to, to get a role of most of the eastern shore, uh, an updated role can stand, stand and I'll suddenly have one if they're, say, standing for Pembroke or for Franklin, those, those things are provided. We get them at, at the council elections, but the idea that we're not allowed to sort of use them ongoing when we actually need them in the, in this job, to me seems a little bit silly. So, uh, yeah, for me it's point A and B two and three.
Thank you councillor Walker. And those of us that know you well would never accuse you of being Nicolás Machiavelli. So...
That's good to hear.
Sure. Deputy Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Um, Waterworld probably might have been more precipitators for the motion, but, um, in any event, a bit disappointing that, um, state government actually didn't engage particularly well with the sector, if you read the officers' reports, um, in terms of the way that, um, didn't actually advise council about the discussion paper, but nevertheless, we've landed where we are, um, no extensions provided either. Um, for me, um, this is a bit of a mixed bag in terms of the discussion paper and like other colleagues, I don't always, um, I don't actually agree with everything that we've put forward as part of our response to the discussion paper, but neither did I expect to. So there's no reason for me to stand up in here and indicate that I'll be opposing, uh, putting forward, uh, the, uh, response. Uh, I'm perfectly capable and will very likely put forward my own personal response to a lot of the matters, uh, that I feel strongly about. Um, I do support going to a single statewide vote. I do think that would improve, uh, the franchise. I know we've jumped up to about eighty-five percent. We'd love to see us getting over that ninety percent, which is generally what we see in state and federal elections. Um, but, you know, disengagement, I think, seeing the federal election rate, turnout rate plummet a little bit, but nevertheless, I think, uh, there's great merit in having some consistency across our voting mechanisms, uh, local, state and federal. So personally, I do support that. Um, during the workshop, I mentioned to colleagues that there seemed to be some inconsistencies around, uh, those people who'll be eligible to vote or stand. I hope that they will be picked up, um, as part of that feedback. Um, that's really important, not appropriate to have people be eligible to, to vote in the election but not stand as a candidate. So I'm glad to see that's included, um, as part of that. I share the concerns about, um, the lack of detail in some areas and so there need, you know, I think there's a fair way to go in terms of the consultation in relation to things like, um, the role of the commissioner, the role of the director of local government providing a statement. Um, I think, you know, there's, in terms of, uh, party affiliations, um, as somebody who actually successfully campaigned to remove the capacity to, uh, engagement roles at different levels of government at the same time and also to include, uh, party affiliations on legislative council ballot papers when they didn't previously, uh, exist, they weren't required, I found myself a little bit torn on that one, so, but I, I, I'm leaning towards not, non-politicisation of, uh, the ballot papers, but perhaps as a mechanism... not, non-politicisation of, uh, the ballot papers, but perhaps as a mechanism for those things to be included in the booklet, the candidate booklet, uh, might be more appropriate place to have those sort of things fleshed out. In terms of, um, the alternate motion, uh, I also don't support, uh, B one. For the reasons that have been quite well prosecuted, I don't see that there's been an abuse, uh, of, uh, the elector poll process. So I don't see any need for that. The other two, B two and three, I think, um, actually have merit. I think will add, a, a positive contribution to what we put back to government to consider. So as I said, overall, I think it's, it's a real mixed bag for me personally. I'll look forward to providing my own, uh, response outside of the council process, uh, but I thank the officers for all the work that they've done and I'll, um, uh, support the motion.
Thank you, Counsel Ritchie. Uh, Counsel Hume, I'll call on you now for your right reply and just make the point that, uh, you get extra points for any Kevin Costner reference you can weed in.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, like Counselor Walker, I may have also supported that elector poll in relation to Bryan Adams because I was forced to sing that awful song at my grade six assembly.
Well done.
I'll never forget it. But look, um, I, just, um, addressing, uh, Counselor James's contribution first, um, in relation to point two, um, what, what this is, um, supposed to prevent is people using council as, as a vehicle to, uh, initiate an expensive opinion poll in relation to something that the council has no control over. So we could end up having an elector poll, for example, about, um, you know, the situation in Gaza, or, um, dare I say it, in Counselor Goine's absence, the contamination of mRNA vaccines. You know, I don't think that's something that, or at least most of us envisage elector polls, you know, as being a legitimate use for. You know, in terms of access to the, um, elector role, um, when you're asked about legislative protections and who's going to police that, um, well, there already exists policing at other levels of government. There are, um, offences under the act for the misuse of the role, such as, you know, divulging information to third parties who don't have legitimate access. Um, there are associated offences and those matters can be, um, you know, brought forward by the Tasmania Electoral Commission and prosecuted in the court. Hopefully, most people, and I expect most people, if the, the offences and the penalties are high enough, um, will not engage in that sort of behaviour and will use the role sensibly and responsibly, should there be provided access. Going to the one that, uh, seems to have generated the most discussion, that's point one. Um, look, uh, I really appreciate Counselor Kennedy's, um, attempts to, to come to a consensus. I, I, um, appreciate the fact that, you know, there are some councils who, who may not accept, uh, that 20% threshold, but would agree with me that the current threshold is, is too low. Um, I don't think we're going to, you know, be able to debate and get a consensus on that, that tonight. Having said that, it's worth noting also that this is just our submission. It's not the, the final say. There will be a number of submissions, including, um, a personal submission from me. Like the Deputy Mayor, I would, I would like to personally, um, make some points in relation to this. I think people can guess from this alternate motion what that submission's going to say. But, uh, look, um, I, the way I see it, um, elector polls generally, I don't think have a lot of value, particularly from the point of view that they are non-binding. It's a very expensive elector poll. Um, looking at the examples that Counselor Mulder offered, if you, uh, if you have a vacancy in there.
Thank you, Counsel Hume. All right, um, we'll put the, uh, put the motion ad sereatum. The first one is part A, the council notes local government electoral discussion paper. All those in favour? National unanimous, thank you. All right. Now, part B one, the endorses council submission, attachment one to the associated report to the local government electoral bill discussion paper with the following amendments. One, council supports the proposal in Reform 33 to increase the proportion of electors signing a petition required to compel the council to hold an elector poll to 20%. I'll put that. All those in favour? Those against? I think that one's lost. All right. Uh, now, part B two, and I'll read this because we've, we've removed the last five words. It reads, council supports the proposal in Reform 33 to restrict the matters about which an elector poll may be held to matters with a legitimate connection to the exercise of a council's functions or powers or the incorporation of the council. All those in favour? Against, so carry. Part B three is as presented. And I'll read that as well. Council supports a further proposal not canvassed in the discussion paper that incumbent councillors are given access to electoral roll for their local government area during their term for communication with residents and ratepayers on legitimate council business with appropriate legislative protections against councillors' misuse of the role. All those in favour? Those against, so carry. Thank you, councillors. Moving now on to, uh, eight point four point three, discussion paper remaking local government regulations. Uh, seek a mover, please. Thank you, Counselor James. A second up? Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Counselor James?
I seek council support.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This has been, um, quite well canvassed in the workshop. Uh, pleasingly, many of the things that are, uh, featured, um, as part of, uh, the remaking of local government regulations proposal are things that our council is already doing or well underway towards doing. So, um, it's always nice to be ahead of the game. Um, so I can, it's a good thing for our council and I support the motion.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Any other colleagues wishing to make a contribution? Counsel Mulder, thank you.
In broad terms, I support the submission that we're making. I may note that, um, the state government doesn't have a huge tracker going to taking any notice of us when we talk about things that we want to do, but, um, so be it. It's an appropriate thing. Um, there are lots of other issues I think that, um, should be brought up at this particular point in time. There are things like, um, um, you know, the council amalgamation debate where the government backflipped and decided that we would only ask the people after if we wanted to. And for me, that's democracy just gone wrong. We should be asking the people if they want their councils to amalgamate and then we consider what, what the people think. For heaven's sake, you know, we wouldn't want to hear what they think about us sitting on our little heaps. So, um, you know, but there are lots of other areas and, and lots of other ideas and, 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 um, but this isn't what the council submission is. And I encourage each of you, if you have particular issues like I do, you make your own submissions. You make individual submissions and you put those points before them to them. Council endorsing a mistake, endorsing a mistake, yeah, which is probably what we're doing, but council endorsing this whole report. Yes, it's got a lot of weight because we're collectively endorsing the report, but that doesn't mean that our individual voices shouldn't be heard. And that doesn't mean that I, if, if you asked us to agree with every phrase, every line and everything in the report, no, you wouldn't get it up there. But there's got to be a collective response and we've got to accept the fact that, um, the majority of us are in support of the majority of the recommendations. And then you've got the freedom to have your own say as well, uh, and make your points as you need to do, as, as many of us have done. So by and large, it's been a, um, it's been workshopped, um, and we've had a, a pretty good look at it. Uh, and, and by and large, I agree with most of the, um, of the recommendations that appear, um, in this thing. Uh, as I said before, not all of them, but most of them. And there's a couple of things I'd like to see added, but that's a question for my personal submission, not the collective one.
Any other colleagues wishing to make a contribution? Counsel Hume, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I just wanted to, um, endorse in particular, um, the submission in relation to, uh, remote attendance at meetings. And I've got to say, uh, when, um, the question came up as to whether the, uh, the COVID era arrangements, um, should continue, um, and there was a consultation on that and, and, um, I suggested council put the position that, you know, in the 21st century where we, we have, you know, excellent meeting technology, um, that we could, should at least allow councillors to, um, attend meetings remotely in circumstances where they can't, for some reason, physically get to the chamber. I, I didn't see a problem with that. Um, for some reason, a number of other councils did. And, you know, I, I think, I think we need to recognise that, um, in this day and age with the, with the technology we have access to, that, um, remote attendance in situations where, you know, we, we can facilitate it, but, but, you know, someone for whatever reason, an emergency, um, can't get, physically get to the chamber, um, you know, should be allowed and, and is, is a more democratic way to approach things. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Hume. Any other colleagues wishing to make a contribution? There being none, Counsel James, write a reply, please.
Seek council support.
Thank you. I'll put the motion. That is a recommendation. All those in favour? National unanimous, thank you, colleagues. Moving now on to eight point, uh, four point four, Local Government Association Tasmania President and General Management Committee elections. As indicated via email to colleagues, uh, this afternoon, um, as we're required, uh, to have a council, um, resolution on this, there will need to be a vote. So what I will seek to do is to put, um, both positions, that is, um, the president as well as the general management committee nominee as two separate questions, or in the first instance. And, uh, the question will be, uh, or the, does council wish to nominate a councillor as a candidate for election as president of the Local Government Association of Tasmania? So that's either a show of hands whether we wish to nominate someone as president of Local Government Association Tasmania. So those who wished to nominate someone as a, as for the position of president of Ilgat, please raise their hand. There being none, uh, that, those against nominating someone as president, please raise their hand. Right, that's unanimous. So we won't be nominating anyone for the position of president. Second part then is for the position, uh, to nominate a councillor as a candidate for election as a committee member for the Southern Electoral District, that is representative on the General Management Committee. The first question is, before you stand, Counsel Mulder, do we wish as a council to nominate? Do we wish to make a nomination? So the question is, do we wish to nominate a candidate? Those in favour of nominating a candidate, please raise their hand. All right, that's the case then. I'll call then for a nomination. Is there a nomination?
I'd like to nominate Counselor James.
Thank you. Is there a second up for that nomination? Counsel Walker, thank you. Counsel James, you accept the nomination? Thank you. Are there any other nominations for this position? Right, there being none. We'll now proceed to ballot and that is a yes, no answer. And that is that, uh, the yes, support for Counselor James, no, is that we do not nominate a candidate. So it's either support or do not support. I'll also seek to scrutineers. To oversee, thank you, Counsel Kennedy, Counsel Chong. If you could assist Ms. Ellis once she's collected the ballot papers. And the CEO just makes sure the ballot box is empty. Thank you. Yeah. We've checked the bottom as well for falseness. Watch Mr. Machiavelli there. Thanks, Ms. Ellis. Thank you, Councillors Kennedy, Counsel Chong. Do we have any formal votes? Seriously? Are there 11 ballot papers? Maybe neither an act or mist. No, no, just tell me the, just tell me the.
We have, uh, seven in support.
Thank you. Counsel James, congratulations. You're a nominee for the General Management Committee for the Southern District, uh, for those, uh, council's 20,000 population above. So congratulations. All right, moving now on to eight point four point five, which is council meeting change of commencement times. I'll call for a mover of the motion, Counsel Hunter. Thank you. Is there a second up? Thank you, Counsel Warren. Counsel Hunter, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to thank the council officers and my colleagues for this coming back to council. As I must say that when I brought the motion forward in July last year, I didn't expect to return to, uh, the motion to change the meeting time. So I'm pleased that we're here. Now, as I said last year, Clarence City Council is only one of two of the 29 councils in Tasmania that meet as late as 7:00 PM. This is a serious OHNS risk in my point of view. Uh, it really comes down to fatigue management for us as councillors when we're driving home as well as for staff. And particularly for staff, it comes down to fatigue management. The leaders that we have here across the executive, they might start as early as 7:30 or 8 o'clock in the morning. They can't delay their start time because their staff need them and expect them to be at work. If they live some distance from council, they probably won't go home in between finishing work and the council meeting. So if we don't finish tonight's meeting till 10:00 PM, that could be a 14 to 15 hour day. Now, most industries such as construction and other matters have fatigue management procedures which wouldn't allow them to then start work early the next morning, which in this case, they would. It also comes down to effective decision-making for ourselves. Now, as an early riser, and I know some of my colleagues are as well, after 9:00 PM, it's hard to make effective decisions. And sometimes we don't get to the meaty part of the agenda until that time. And often, once we get to the closed meeting, we've sort of lost the plot. There's a lot of evidence to show that fatigue and lack of sleep really impacts decision-making. Now, that only goes for the decisions we make on the night, but also for those who have work commitments or other commitments the following day. It impacts those decisions and your ability to work effectively. Now, 7:00 PM was an improvement on what was previously 7:30 start time, uh, which changed in 2019, which is fantastic. However, I think times have continued to change and it's time to come in light, come in to train with, uh, the way other local governments are moving. And it also makes it more inclusive for people who have work, uh, because council isn't a full-time role. Um, it allows them to both fulfil their work requirements as well as run for council. It allows them to both fulfil their work requirements as well as run for council. Now, a 6pm start ensures that councillors can still have that regular work commitments. And we took it out to community engagement. The results of that engagement are telling, with 21 responses from the community, basically no one cares what time we start our meetings. But for those who did respond, they preferred an earlier start time, with the majority recommending 6pm. Now, we occasionally get a few people in the gallery, which is fantastic. It would be great to see more. However, few stay to the end of the meeting, the open agenda. And the few that do remain often fall asleep. I'd often like to be doing the same, but it's not possible. So why not ensure councillor and staff's safety, support effective decision making, both within the meeting and the following day for those who have other commitments? I seek my colleagues' support.
Thank you councillor Hunter. Councillor Warren, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and thank you councillor Hunter for that excellent articulation as to the reasons for making this change, which I wholeheartedly support. Look, it's difficult to find a time that suits everybody. I know that some councillors come from full-time work and that it's difficult to get here by 6 o'clock. You know, some councillors would prefer a later start, some councillors have even suggested a mid-afternoon meeting, as some regional councils do. But I would beg you to consider the health and safety aspects as outlined by councillor Hunter, and how tired we all are by 9 o'clock at night, even those who are not early risers. And I beg you to consider for health and safety issues, is it really that inconvenient to make special arrangements one week out of three to be here by 6 o'clock? Can you do that for the health and safety of your colleagues? I request, I sincerely request that you support this motion.
Any other colleagues wishing to make a contribution? Thank you councillor James.
The lowest common denominator here is what the public want and what they expect of their elected representatives. And this particular poll that was canvassed, there were 22 responses. That's not a lot, 22 responses, and it was widely canvassed throughout our media outlets, on our website, social media, advertising. And to have 22 responses, and okay, 57% were in favour of a change of the time. And there was a number of those changes that weren't necessarily saying 6 o'clock. Some were saying earlier than that during the day. So to rely on that as being an appropriate time to change from 7 to 6, I don't think it's really what the public really expect. And, okay, some of us work and others have concerns about their health and safety and as well as the staff. But at the end of the day, I can see that if we start at 6 o'clock, there are going to be families that would otherwise, and at that time would be having their meal, they would be around the kitchen, around the dining table having a meal, and basically would not be able to be here by 6 o'clock. And also, it's been suggested that they can tune in and watch on our livestream at another time and date. But that's not really the essence of what council meetings are all about. I think that we really need to think this thing through properly and consider the public at large, not us as to whether or not we can get home safely. That is always a factor. But at the end of the day, if we're going to talk about if we're running out of gas at 9 o'clock at night, which seems to be where we're heading, a number of us, then really there is something wrong because at the closed meeting, I'm full of energy, I'm about to kick on for another hour. But that's me, that's the way I look at it. But, yeah, thanks councillor Mulder. So, look, I think we have to consider the public here and not necessarily think about ourselves, and I'm in favour of maintaining the status quo.
Thank you councillor James. Councillor Kennedy, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. And some colleagues around the table will remember when I first joined council how archaic I thought it was that we were starting at 7.30, was it then? And we did manage to pull the time back a fraction. And that wasn't for purely selfish reasons, because I'm a 5 o'clock starter of a morning. And so I was in favour, I think, is it Hobart City Council that have morning meetings or daytime meetings of 4 o'clock? Yep. I'd certainly be happy with morning meetings. And when I signed up for this role, I was aware that every third Monday I had to make myself available for it, every time the meetings were called. But listening to the people around the table, the debate that has happened previously, and also speaking to people that, those few people that might be engaged with the meetings, the live streaming is the best thing that we've ever done. We don't, unless there's something very, very topical, that's, we don't have queues of people wanting to get in here into the gallery to see what's going on. If it's big enough, they'll be here, and otherwise they'll just watch the live stream. So I will be supporting, it does make a lot of difference to me, but I absolutely understand your case. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Mulder, thank you.
Mr Mayor, I will take a slightly different view. I'll be supporting the motion, but I'll take a slightly different view is that with the elected representatives of the community, it has to be something that works for us. That's what the point is. If there are people around who have jobs and they can't make it to a particular point in time, and then I think we need to factor that in and to make it available. And not everyone who sits on this council is in a senior job where they can manage to organise time and all the rest of it. Some people are 9 to 5, you know, and they have to be able to work 9 to 5 or a 9 to thing. And there are shift workers, and when I first came onto council, I was one. And only because I was a senior member of the police department was I able to manage my hours to enable me to attend. But if a sergeant or a constable had been elected to council, you know, it would have just been impossible for them to attend certain meetings because some people have to be on the job at particular times. So the timing of a council meeting needs to suit those elected representatives. And if you're feeling a little bit weary and you've got community safety things, then you can always take a taxi home, provided one of your fellow councillors doesn't get stuck into you over the misuse of taxis. So those sorts of issues are all fine. And when you get to the point of, you know, you look at the pay grade of some people, and when I was a police commander, I had to manage my own hours, which meant if you had to work longer or earlier or later or on weekends and stuff like that, then you did that. And that's just part of getting to the level of where you're doing it. Those are all arguments for an appropriate time. And if it suits the current council for meetings to be at 6 o'clock or 4 o'clock, or, you know, whatever time suits them, then I'm all for the change. But we have to leave ourselves open to the elected members sitting around the table doing their thing. And the community, as far as I'm concerned, and I thank the current member for Pembroke, who actually introduced the concept of live streaming council meetings so that the community could participate in them. And those sorts of initiatives and changes make it all the better for council meetings to do it. My concern with the local government thing that we just discussed, one of them, is that we're now going to have councillors who could be sitting in their offices zooming in to a council meeting. And to me, that is a real anathema. We're sitting around this table. It's our body language, it's the way we express ourselves, it's the tone of our voice, and some of these things do not translate to the live feed. Like, I'm watching the body language of the councillors around the table now. If you're on a live feed, you can't do that. So I've got real concerns about some of those reforms. And I think it's vitally important that council meetings are at a time that suits the current council. So if the councillors around this table are happy with it, fortunately, I'm in the position where I basically don't have those sorts of commitments and I can make it any time that suits. But my concern is that as long as the majority of councillors are happy with the meeting time, then that's, then 6 o'clock is fine by me.
Councillor Hume, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Councillor James said that this is about the public and we should consider the public. Going back to the debate we had earlier about the thresholds for elector polls, if you want to express it as a percentage, the number of people who participated in this consultation was 0.05% of our electors, assuming they were all electors, they may not have been. The reality is that the overwhelming majority of the public don't care. I would love to see more of the public engaging in our meetings. I like that there are avenues to do that. But I think we can count on the fingers of one hand the number of people who regularly engage with public meetings through questions on notice, questions from the gallery or deputations, and we can all name those people, right? You know, the ones who regularly turn up. But the reality is that the overwhelming majority of other people who engage do so on an ad hoc basis, generally when there is an issue or an item that has a particular interest to them. So as such, and noting that the consultation did favour an earlier start anyway, but I believe that the emphasis, the important thing, is what suits the councillors and also the executive staff who have to turn up to these meetings. And it's clear for most of them that that is an earlier start time. There's a lot of other things I could say, but I think councillor Hunter's covered a lot of it already. She's very eloquently made the point. And I think this is a very important point, that that earlier start time is not just a matter of convenience, it is also a workplace health and safety issue. And workplace health and safety, whether it's for elected members or for the staff, is something that we should all take very seriously. Thank you.
Any other colleagues? Councillor Walker, thank you.
Look, spoiler alert, I won't be supporting the motion as it currently stands. In fact, in the profoundly unlikely and extremely long odds case that it is unsuccessful, I foreshadow moving a motion that is pretty much carbon copy what is written there, but changing from 7pm to 6pm, in point B from 7pm to 6.30. That would be an incremental change, and I think that would be a change that would still allow probably enough gap for most people that are doing a 9 to 5 workday to attend council, to consider standing as a candidate. And hopefully, you know, maybe be successful and beyond council. But also, I think one thing that hasn't been mentioned up to now has been the ability to come and make a deputation. That's a really key democratic process that I value in local government and often something that can have a big bearing on some of my decision making on issues that come before council. And I think that that's just making it a bit tight. I note points that have been made about convenience and safety etcetera, and we are talking about one meeting every three weeks. And we are also noting that we have significantly made changes elsewhere, such as the time that workshops start. So there are some of the points I'd like to consider. One of the things that was raised was around council's ability to make, you know, decisions as time goes by. And I want to reassure everyone here and watching at home that we are perfectly capable of making impaired decisions at 5 o'clock, 6 o'clock, 7 o'clock and so on. So, yeah, don't expect big changes on that front. The usual will continue, even at the earlier start time. I don't seek this, I seek councillors' lack of support for this motion and the mine foreshadowed one.
Councillor Chong, thank you.
And I thank councillor Walker for his comments, alivened the discussion a little. Thank you councillor Hunter for your initial opening comments, very pertinent, I feel. Look, personally, does it suit me to mostly have the meetings at 6? No, it doesn't. But having said that, I think the wider viewpoint of is it better for the safety of the council laws as a whole and the officers as a whole? Absolutely, I take that as a given and therefore I will be supporting changing the time of the meeting.
Councillor Tucker, do you think?
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I've thought quite a bit about this. And I find myself not persuaded any differently from the position I took the last time that we discussed this motion. And I actually have a bit of a slightly different take in terms of the work health and safety aspect because I, like many of my colleagues, I'm sure, regularly work in the evenings, regularly out to 10, 11 at night, attending community events and functions and other things. Why is there no concern about work health and safety under those conditions? I've worked all day in a day job, I go and attend council-related activities in the evening. We don't, we only seem to be interested in one day every three weeks in terms of people's capacity, work health and safety, impairment of decision making. So I actually find this whole thing rather inconsistent with the sorts of things that we're doing day in, day out as elected members. So I just turn that on its head in terms of the concerns that have been put forward around work health and safety because I don't find that consistent with the things that many of us are doing outside. Obviously, the numbers that have participated in would be disappointing, I think, for the team that took all the time and effort to go out and consult. It's quite an issue, the level of disengagement, but not a surprise. Perhaps on the bright side, you know, people think, sometimes you could interpret that to be that a well-functioning council isn't soliciting a whole range of negative feedback. So, you know, you might be able to take that quite positively, that there's not a lot of angst about how we go about our business or when we do it. But for me personally, I would rather see it remain at 7. And from the community perspective, we have to, and I think councillor Mulder might have touched on this and also councillor Hume, not everybody finishes at 5. But even if you do, you, many people need to go home, need to deal with children, meals, so on, and perhaps even have a rest between the time they knock off from their day job to when they might want to come along to participate here at the chamber or indeed join in online. And I know, you know, 65% of the respondents, and 21 because one of the respondents didn't actually complete the survey at all, so it wasn't 22, it was 21. And 65% actually view via the livestream and watch the recording. So it's not anything in terms of the response rate that is able to persuade me differently from my previous position that we ought not change the time. I can't see anything that convinces me that there is a great case to be made, understanding where I'm coming from on those work health and safety matters. So, but I do appreciate the work that's been done. I'm always happy to revisit these things from time to time. And I thank councillor Hunter for continuing to have the debate wherever it lands. So naturally, we accept the result wherever it goes. But for me personally, I think that the best result would be the status quo or maybe even, you know, visiting a stage process. So I won't be supporting this motion, but I thank colleagues for their interest.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. Before I call on councillor Hunter for her write a reply, I'll join the debate as a councillor, not as a mayor. And as colleagues have already pointed out, there hasn't been a high level of engagement with this community consultation. That's no reflection of our team, of course. I think it's just not a high order issue of other, as other elected members have already pointed out. 57% of the 21 respondents, well, you know, that's 12 people. 12 people that have been given, you know, four options opted for 6pm. I think, however, we'd all agree that at the heart of a strong and thriving democracy is public participation and the capacity and the ability for people to to be able to actively participate in that process. I grew up in a small country town. Council meetings are once a month. They're held during the day, and every council was a man, and he was either a retired farmer or a retired businessman that was able to do it. And even as a young lad, I thought that was... And even as a, as a young lad, I thought that was not representative of the wider community and not good for democracy and decision making. You talk about groupthink, well, I'll tell you what, a lot of those guys were in lock step with one another because they all came from similar backgrounds, and that wasn't a good thing for, in my view, for decision making. So it's important that no one is disenfranchised from entering this chamber representing their community. And when I joined this, first joined this council, nearly twenty-five years ago, it was seven thirty. We brought that back to seven o'clock, and I was of the view to retain the status quo. Now, that was my position last year. I have had an opportunity to talk with some of the staff, it's really interesting that some, one very senior staff member said to me, oh, no, I like seven o'clock because Laisman actually has some dinner between finishing work and coming into the chamber. So from an occupational health, work and safety issue, there's that consideration as well. However, we can always revisit this down the track, and maybe even a new term of council might, might have a different, different view of it. I'd like to thank colleagues for their contributions to serving, I think everyone at the heart of the contributions has been very, or is cognizant of the importance of our community being involved in our, in our decision making and the democratic process. So I do support the motion, I thank that the team is weak since her team, but also councillor Hunter for her dogged advocacy and lobbying on this. And with that, with that's your contribution, now a call on councillor Hunter for her right of reply, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and thank you for your contributions. Yes, we could go to six thirty as an incremental change, but why? Six PM is really a compromise to what other councils are doing across Tasmania. We could hold it in the morning, we could hold it in the day, but six PM allows people who are working or who have families and other commitments still to do all that, come to a council meeting, do their role here and get home at a reasonable time. And by reasonable, I mean before eleven PM. Councillor James talked about families having a meal at six PM. I question that. I have a young family, I'm a working parent, as I know others around the table are, it's more inconvenient for my family to start at seven PM than to miss dinner and get home late, because it's getting home late that wakes everyone up and disturbs them and upsets them, and makes it difficult for the start the next day. When my daughter was younger, it also made it more difficult to find care, because it's easier for a babysitter to leave at, say, nine thirty, ten PM than if you're saying, I won't get home till potentially eleven PM, given the drive after the council meeting. We have gone out to the community, I don't think we need to go out again in this case, the council officers have done an excellent job in promoting it, they don't care. So as councillor Mulder said, it's really about us and the staff, and there's a lot of staff that are, have to participate in this meeting, they might not be in the room, but they watch online and are available for comment if need be. In my view, health and safety trumps community expectations, and it always will. It's really important, it is the role of the CEO to make sure that we are all healthy and safe. I ask you to support health and safety and effective decision making, both within the chamber and the following day. We've talked about this at length, thank you everyone for your contributions, it has been interesting over the last six months, but at tonight's meeting, I do seek your support, it's time to make a change.
councillor Hunter, thank you. Colleagues, a Friday's agenda brief, I did indicate that I would take this recommendation at Sariaten, but unless anyone wants me to do that, I'll put it as a whole, does anyone wish to do this separately? There being no, then I'll put the recommendation as it is A, B, C and D, all those in favour? Those against? So carry on. Thank you, moving now on to eight point four point six, which is City Heart, there are, councillor Hume got the jump, I knew councillor Walker. I was looking dead straight at you, you're avoiding my gaze. Councillor Hume, do you have a, do you have a second?
Yes, my second.
Councillor Hume, do you have a second?
Second.
councillor Kennedy, thank you, so do we have the, we have the alternate motion? Thank you, all right, councillor Hume, the floor is yours, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Basically, the, the motion that I'm moving, the idea of it is to keep open the option of key worker housing in Charles Hand Park. We, in the, in the lead up to the, during the High Performance Centre debate and lead up to the Tasmanian Government's flawed decision on the location of the High Performance Centre, many of the people who are now opposing this particular aspect of the City Heart plan were insisting that the council should, quote unquote, stick to the original City Heart plan. Now, there's been a conspiracy theory circulating, some of it in the letters pages of the Mercury, that this key worker housing aspect of the plan has suddenly been forced upon people, when the reality is you look at the concepts plan, which was released in March twenty twenty-three, so exactly two years ago, it was actually included in there. Now, I understand some people take the view that we should fight for every single square foot of public open space, and not a single square foot of public open space should be given up for anything but. But I think a more sensible approach is to ask the question, well, what is the best use of the space that's available? How much space is needed in connection with our city heart, and what are the best uses of those spaces? Part of the issue, as I see it, with Charles Hand Park is, at the moment, it's not a particularly active park, it's not a highly used park, and progressing the key worker housing as proposed in the plan would provide an opportunity to put something on the northern end of the park, which, you know, is particularly inactive, and also an opportunity to activate the rest of the park, because the residents in that housing would have the opportunity to enjoy the public open space there in connection with their, their residents. So I believe it's a sensible aspect of the plan, I don't agree with excising it from the plan, and I think it's something that we should continue to look at. Thank you.
thank you councillor Hume, councillor Kennedy. Thank you, any other contributions to remain, councillor James, thank you.
Yes, look, I'm so surprised that this motion has come forward, given that the officers have gone at great lengths to actually put forward a recommendation which has been circulated to the public at large, and one of those recommendations that the officers have put forward is to remove the proposed affordable housing element in Charles Hand Memorial Park from the final City Heart plan, and affirms, and this is important for councillor Holm, and infers, and affirms that housing will not be considered for Charles Hand Memorial Park in the future. This is what the officers have put forward, and now in his motion, he is saying, and he uses the words, he still wants to see key worker housing in Charles Hand Park, which is contrary to what the consultation process was about. It wasn't at, at all in support of affordable housing or workers' housing in Charles Hand Park, it was to the contrary, and it was to basically take on board and what the officers have said, and I just mentioned that a moment ago, was that there needs to be that clear comment, that no affordable housing in Charles Hand Park, and that notes the results of the recent consultation on the final draft city plan. And just looking at what is being proposed here is absolutely contrary to what the public have said all along, is what we have and the officers quite rightfully have put in the report, and this has been conveyed to the public at large, that it's not our response to consultation authorizes in its entirety that's Charles Hand Park, okay, and bring a report back to council with an engagement of consulting stakeholders, and that's with the basis of, of bringing affordable housing back into it. I seek council to knock this out once and for all, it's a nonsense motion, because it's contrary to what has happened in relation to what the offices have put together, and secondly, the consultation process was quite clear that it wanted to maintain Charles Hand Park and also the Rosney Parklands for open spaces, for its beauty, and its basis on which people can enjoy, and therefore it's, I'm seeking council to say no to this, and then let's have a consideration of what the offices have put forward in their proposal.
Just to be clear, councillor James, are you foreshadowing that if this alternate motion is unsuccessful, that you'll move your?
I have a motion here which I'd like to foreshadow.
Is it the officer's recommendation?
No, it's not. It's, it's part thereof.
Well, we don't have that.
Oh, I'll actually, I've just taken it off. Someone stole something off my.
So, so you're not foreshadowing councillor Walker's motion, because that would be inappropriate, I'll call on councillor Walker, he might like to foreshadow his motion.
It would be inappropriate.
If councillor, councillor Hume's motion is unsuccessful, there's no Holm here, there's only councillor Hume. So councillor Walker, would you like to make contribution at this stage?
Um, I hadn't indicated I would like to.
What I'm, what I'm suggesting is you might like to foreshadow that if councillor Hume's motion is unsuccessful, you will present yours. You don't have, you don't feel, don't feel obliged.
Are you suggesting that if I don't take the opportunity to speak now, I've foregone my opportunity?
No, no, what I'm saying is someone else might get the job when you're in foreshadow your motion and move it as their own.
Or, or the ones with the agenda, all these things are possible, yeah.
Absolutely. councillor Mulder, please.
Thanks very much.
What are you foreshadowing?
I'm foreshadowing, and I'm about to repeat myself, but that was at a different meeting. We're going to exize Charles Hand Park out of the thing. You're going to, you've already exized Kangaroo Bay, the jewel in the crown, as we said. What, what happens? Someone doesn't like where you're going to put a footpath next week, we're going to exize that? We just can't keep exizing, we've either got a plan or we haven't got a plan, and this is not a plan. The social housing thing should never have been in there from the beginning, or if you were going to put it in, where is your twenty million dollar community and arts and culture centre that you planned building on the thing, not mentioned? Where is the roadway that we have to build between Rye Wina Road somewhere and either, and either to just Eastlands or through to Gordonsville Road, because we can't keep accessing, egressing from the Rosney Golf Course site, particularly if we build an arts and culture centre there, we can't keep egressing through the thing. That stuff isn't in the plan. You haven't got your roads in the plan, you haven't got your city hall in the plan that you're going to build on the, in, in here in a park that is used. You haven't got, we haven't yet worked out what the future of this place here is. We know we've got options that we're, we're looking at, we know it's not big enough, we're either going to spend a heap of money, or we're going to find other accommodation and stuff like that. This is all in the City Heart. How can you have a City Heart plan when all these balls are still up in the air, and now you're going to take a couple more and throw them up in the air? This isn't a plan, this is a semi sort of, well, maybe if the balls fall this way or that way, this is what we might do. If you're going to have a plan, then you put the necessary ingredients in. You, you, you can't have a City Heart when the jewel in the crown, the head, is actually exized, when you're going to take the whole thing from the school away, and the school didn't say, no, we want it to do. If you have a look at what the college's submission actually was, it was that we need to do some further discussion about the entrances to this particular college. I'm not opposed to housing on Charles Hand Park, it's tucked up on the north side, it's concomitant with the kind of accommodation, the modest houses that are on the other side of Rye Wina Road. I'm not against development, I was for a modest hotel on Kangaroo Bay side, not the, not the, not the monstrosity they keep imposing on us, but I was for that development. I was for a high performance centre, at one stage it was going to be built on Charles Hand Park, and, and then we suggested it might be better on the golf course. I'm pro-development, and I haven't backflipped at the last minute and decided that a high performance centre was okay, but housing's not. Has anyone actually dug out and had a look at the, at the original concept proposal and seen where this housing is? You know, a car park and some pine trees. And I take note, we cannot be excising Charles Hand Park entirely from the City Heart plan, you've just ripped the heart out of the City Heart. We need these things, we need to wait, we need to wait until we see what happens with the Shambroad land, we need to see what happens, what, what results from our current discussions around the future of this building and, and the other buildings in the area, we need to work out whether we're going to have a city hall or not, we need to work out, we need to tell the people what's happening with the social, with the cultural and social centre, and of course, that's up in the air, because who knows, we could be using this, this building for those purposes. There's all these unknowns up there, and here we are ploughing on with three quarters of a City Heart plan. I think it's time to, to just breathe easy, as I said at the last council meeting, it's time to stop, it's time to wait for some of the balls to fall into place, not ruling things in, not ruling things out, it's time to get the arteries, the road, the connections sorted out, what we actually think is going to happen, when we know what's going to happen with various bits and pieces, and what's the rush? What's the rush? In the next six months, a lot of this stuff, if we don't keep agreeing to, to Shambroad's adjournment, in the next six months or so, a lot of these things will start to fall into place, and then we're in a position to know the kinds of things that we want to be in.
Thank you, any other colleagues wishing to make contribution? councillor Chong, thank you.
Mr Mayor, two things, I suppose. I, I don't know if affordable housing in the top of Charles Hand Park is the right thing to do. It's, I agree, it's been in the plan since we very first looked at it, not very big, so probably most people looked at the big bits of green stuff and didn't notice the fact that it was always there, be that as it may. I do think this motion is sensible, because it says, let's just put this on one side, we'll think about it in a couple of years. Ideally, I would like it left in there, but that's not what any of these motions tonight are saying, they're all saying, let's take it out at the moment and let's put it on one side, not saying don't include it eventually, but take it out for a couple of years so we can have a thought. From that point of view, I think this is probably the most sensible option. The other thing, and I guess to councillor Mulder's comment about we should keep waiting, for goodness sake, we have waited for this for some time already, lots of things, lots of reasons why things got in the way, that small pandemic and other such things caused a bit of a delay, but we are never going to know everything that we want to have in the City Heart until we're quite a long way down the process. This is a thirty-year plan, this isn't built everything tomorrow, we need to start, because at that point, then, we can actually work out what else needs to go into this whole process. I will be supporting the alternate motion, it's not exactly what I would have liked, but I think it's the best option.
Any other colleagues wishing to make a contribution? councillor Warren, thank you.
Thank you, I, I would like to see for the removal of doubt, an explicit statement that housing is not to be considered in this area, and I would like to see Charles Hand Park, Memorial Park, included in the City Heart plan rather than removed. So if someone would be likely to foreshadow a motion along those lines, I'd be happy to support it.
Thank you councillor Warren. councillor Darko, do you wish my contribution?
I basically agree with what councillor Warren has just said, I think that we, at the moment, do not have the social licence with the housing in, that might change, but we'd want to bring people along on that journey, and that it really doesn't make sense to just pull Charles Hand Park out of the City Heart plan at this time. Um, and that it really doesn't make sense to just pull Charles Hand Park out of the city heart plan at this time.
Thank you councillor Darko. Deputy Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I appreciate the contributions from colleagues. I, um, remind people of what's actually in the officer's recommendation, which I think is a sensible way forward. I think that, uh, the community has sent, in my view, a very loud and clear message about, uh, Charles Hand Park and support for ensuring that we don't have a future that includes housing located in the park. Um, I'd like to see the doubts removed over that so we don't have to revisit that in the future and have another discussion about whether or not housing goes in there. I think the community deserves the comfort on that moving forward. Um, in terms of, uh, timing, I think councillor Chong's exactly right. Um, you need to get on and have some, something to start the work on. There will always be a movable feast in terms of things, opportunities that might, uh, come up, whether it's other buildings that become available for council to consider for different things into the future. Um, there's no doubt that that's going to be, uh, something that, that, that will happen. Uh, over a long journey, things change, there, there is some fluidity around it, but you've got to have, uh, something to start. This has been a long time in the making. I think people would, uh, be disappointed if we didn't at least show some action. But bearing in mind, this motion also, um, is about noting the consultation process that we've just been through, respecting the feedback that's come through in relation to Charles Hand Park and giving the community the comfort of that consultation, which was very clear and very strong in respect of that particular position. And authorising the CEO to progress the finalisation of the plan consistent with those points above, meaning still more discussion to be had at council moving forward. So I don't think there's, um, any difficulty with, in fact, the original, um, recommendation as put by the officers. And I would be foreshadowing moving that if, uh, the other amended, uh, uh, alternate motions, um, actually fail. And I will not be supporting, uh, councillor Hume's motion.
Thank you, deputy mayor. So you foreshadowed the officer's recommendation if this alternate motion is unsuccessful. Councillor Hunter, do you wish to make a contribution at this time?
Uh, I'm just a little bit confused, to be quite frank. Um, trying to understand why we would go with the alternative instead of the, uh, officer's recommendation. Um, and I apologize, I couldn't attend the agenda briefing due to bicycle advisory committee meeting on Friday. Maybe that, uh, would have shed some light. But I understand both sides, it's important to get on with something. Um, however, there are a lot of unknowns at this stage, so still to decide.
Thank you. Councillor Walker, do you wish to make a contribution?
Uh, yeah, just for my clarification, are we considering this matter at Sereata?
We can, yes, we can do that, absolutely.
That's great, that's, that's great. I think this motion covers all the food groups. I think it's an a la carte motion that you can pick and choose as you wish. Um, and I've listened to the debate and I note that we may have a situation where, I don't know whether you can, um, move on a foreshadowed motion if some bits are agreed to and others aren't. And let me say, I am an enthusiastic supporter of point A. Because this is what we, this is the whole point of this recommendation, that we note the results of recent consultation on the final city heart plan. Big supporter of that. Yeah, I'm not, not, not so much of a fan of point B. Point B is, is kicking something out to touch in an elegant way. I don't think it's putting enough guardrails around things. And also, um, you know, it is basically build, baby, build as far as Charles Hand Park goes. It's, it's been very silent on that. So I'm not supporting that. And I'd encourage most of my colleagues, especially if you're a member of the Parklands Five rather than the Cement Seven, to not support point B. But note, you will be supporting, you will be supporting point B if you vote for point C. Because point C clearly states authorises the chief executive officer to progress with finalisation of the city heart plan consistent with recommendation B above. So I, I, I would encourage you not to do that. All of this is for me to say, just at its simple tax, feedback came in, let's note it. There's so much of the city heart that's fabulous. We are going to have more housing in the CBD. Most of the points we've got right. The, the areas where we need more work as a council, and that's not a workshop where we have a presentation and we all just say, uh, points. It's actually going to take dialogue, is how do we work through areas like the Parklands? Because for me, I want to express to people that this space, um, should be a long-term thing. We should be starting out listening to committees like Tracks and Trails to get the accessibility right. And then just letting, let people get to know it. And then in time, we may wish to clutter it as is proposed with the plan, but I'm not quite there. So I'm not willing to, um, authorise the finalisation of the city heart plan. And I'd encourage you not to. But if you do want to do it, note that you are supporting point B even if you're planning to vote against it.
All right, so just before we continue with the debate, uh, to be clear, uh, I will put this alternate motion at Sereatum, A, B and C. But if it does come to pass that B and C are unsuccessful, we don't have direction then. So we will then fall to the foreshadowed motion of the deputy mayor. I've sought advice, councillor Walker, thank you, and that's what we'll be doing. Okay, so to be very clear, we can obviously note the results of the rest of consultation of the final draft city plant, heart plan. That's actually part A of the recommendation. We can agree to that, but if we collectively vote against B and C, we don't have any direction. So we will then revert to the, to the foreshadowed motion of the deputy mayor, which is the recommendation. Is that clear?
No, no, it's not, because I think we do have a direction in direction that we're noting it. Um, there was no thing to not finalise or progress or do anything else. Um, that is a decision. If we just vote on A alone, that is a decision. I don't see how it is.
I'll be putting the foreshadowed motion, councillor, councillor Walker. But before I do that though, before I call on, uh, councillor Hume to, um, present his right of reply, I'll enter this debate as a councillor and I'll as your mayor. And to be very honest, I find it extraordinarily frustrating that we seem to be stuck in an inertia, a lack of momentum in this city, so much opportunity. We've been talking to our community for nearly five years now about the city heart plan. And here we are now talking about chucking it. I mean, some of the contributions around this table this evening, I've got to say, I found quite unbelievable. We've conducted the final stage of extensive community consultation for this plan. We had 317 citizens, uh, responded to the survey and over 400 submissions have been received from our community. And importantly, 72% of those who took the time and took the trouble to respond, support the overall plan. So why then would anyone consider not progressing with the plan? Feedback was provided, has been provided over this nearly five-year period on key aspects of the conceptual plan, including cultural recognition, environmental sustainability, public spaces, housing, economic growth and transport solutions. I'm sure we can all agree that they're important aspects and important issues facing our city. And ones that we are constantly approached by our residents and rate payers on, at least for me, nearly on a daily basis. The consultation highlighted community concerns particularly, particularly regarding housing developments in Charles Hand Park and the Rosney Parklands. And can I just place the record that I have never, ever been a supporter of any housing in Charles Hand Park? But we went out to the community and we sought their views. And their views align with mine. They don't agree with it either. And given the community's interest and sense of connection with Charles Hand Park, council officers in their recommendation have recommended creating a separate project to explore ways to enhance the area for existing and future users. We've also heard a strong message from the community about the importance of green spaces and diverse housing options within the city heart. And that's what our communities want, and that's what they expect from five years of consultation. I was first elected to this council in 2000. I retired or resigned in 2008 because I had to move into state, uh, for work reasons. At that time, I made public comment on two particular issues. One, it's a real shame that the second largest city in the state does not have a civic centre. And for a state our size, we have 29 councils. Well, here we are some 17 years later and guess what? Clarence does not have a civic centre and we still have 29 councils in this state. We should be leaders in this space. We've been elected to lead this city. This city's crying out for a city heart. No longer are we a dormant commuter suburb for Hobart. That changed 50 years ago with the Tasman Bridge disaster. And to suggest otherwise is just ridiculous. We are growing at a great rate of knots. We need to step up, we need to be professional and we need to lead. Councillor Hume, write a reply, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, look, I, I endorse everything you've said, Mayor, about, um, the, well, everything you've said about the importance of the city heart plan, uh, of a growing city, uh, the second largest, um, council area in terms of population in the state, um, and the need to have, have a civic centre, the need to have a city heart, um, the need to, you know, be seen as, as a city in its own right rather than just a, a, a collection of suburbs. You know, to, to develop our central business area. Um, you know, we, we need to have, uh, infill housing, we need to have, um, and we need to have public open space. Um, but, uh, you know, a couple of colleagues, um, commented on, on the officer's recommendation and said, you know, why have this alternate when the officers have recommended, uh, removing the housing element? Um, I just want to point out that the, the officer's recommendation is not gospel. The officers did, the officers in recommending what they did, did so, a- and they often do this to reflect what they saw as, as, you know, the feedback from the workshop and what the majority view may be. And it well, it may well be, um, when we go through this motion, that that is what the majority view is. I still believe that the, uh, affordable or key worker housing, whatever you want to call it, aspect of the plan has merit. Um, if you add together the Rosney Parklands and Charles Hand Park, um, you have 21 hectares, which is a massive amount of public open space. And we're talking about a small section of Charles Hand Park. Um, yeah, and the section that we're talking about doesn't really have a lot, a lot to offer. It's a couple of gravel car parks, an, an area that in terms of being used as public open space, if you're talking about the northern end of the park, gets very little use. And to be honest, the remainder of the park itself, um, you know, does, does get a bit of use. But if we're going to value, if we're going to get value out of our public open spaces, uh, the way to do that is to get people using them to activate them. Um, and that is one of the, the opportunities, uh, that this, this housing proposal offers. Um, the motion doesn't actually say we will, uh, accept the housing as part of the proposal and finalise the entire plan as is. Um, it just says we won't rule that out and we'll give it further consideration. Um, and I believe it's worthy of further consideration. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Hume. So just to remind colleagues, we will put the motion at Sereatum, A, B and C. If B and C are lost, we then move to the foreshadowed motion, which is the recommendation from councillor from the deputy mayor, which will then be parts B and C if part A of councillor Hume's motion is, is accepted. I know it's a bit messy, but that's where we landed because we will have a clear, hopefully have a clear decision. Um, so I'll put part A of the alternate motion. All those in favour? Nationalists, thank you. Part B, all those in favour? Thank you. Those against? And that's lost. Part C, all those in favour? A bit redundant. All right, those against? All right, that's lost. So we now move, um, to the foreshadowed motion from the deputy mayor, which is the recommendation, which would be part B and C, noting that part A has already been, uh, supported by colleagues. Thank you, deputy mayor. Is there a second, please? Sorry? Yes, yes, it will be councillor James, yes, and I do hope we get a decision. So is there a second, please? Thank you councillor Hunter. Deputy mayor, thank you.
Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I won't go over all the salient points again. I think we've, um, fleshed out, uh, the key issues in the previous debate. So, um, I just to reiterate though, I think this is a very sensible, uh, way forward. I appreciate that the council officers have made every attempt to be, uh, responsive and sensitive to the feedback that has been provided through the consultation process. I think this gives the community the level of comfort that they would, uh, uh, are and deserve uh, to have in relation to Charles Hand Park moving forward. And so I, uh, seek the support of colleagues.
Thank you, deputy mayor. Councillor Hunter.
Mr. Mayor, uh, after hearing the discussion, I'm comfortable with this motion. I think it takes into account the community consultation, the feedback we received, uh, as well as when we've workshopped this, um, as a council. And I think we need to get on with it.
Thank you. Any other colleagues? Councillor Mulder, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, um, I believe some councillors may have misunderstood what I was saying before or have chosen to misrepresent me. I have said all along that we are not abandoning the city heart plan. We're not pushing it out for 30 or 40 years. Within the next six months to 12 months, we will have some greater definition about some of the things that must be in the future city heart and must be in the actual plan when we get to put pen to paper. And that that stuff is likely to roll out over the next six or seven months. And to be proceeding to adopting a plan which can, which is missing some of those vital elements that will have to be in there in one way or another is, is, is a little too early to be adopting the plan. Because guess what? We'll adopt this plan. I can, I can read the numbers. We'll adopt this plan. And in six or 12 months' time, we'll have to start amending it because there's new elements that are going to come forward in that, you know, that, that... Are we going to go out to consultation again every time an element changes? We, we, this plan needs to be, as I suggested at the last council meeting, this plan needs to be an overarching plan, which has at this stage, the areas identified, not their future uses, but the walkways and the things behind them as an, as an overarching, if you like, infrastructure plan, about which we can then, bit by bit, take the various ideas forward. As we become clearer in our minds about how they are going to work and where they are going to fit. As I said last, three weeks ago, there are too many known unknowns at this point in time to be talking about a master plan. And we've had all this discussion before and I noticed something that's, that's quietly gone missing out of the discussions. Remember the time councillors, when it was all about the night economy? I haven't heard that mentioned for a while. I won't be supporting this motion. We need to hold on for a while.
Councillor James.
Mr. Mayor, and we've already approved part A, which is great. But part B, I will support part B one, but not part B two or C. The reason for that is that part two is very similar to what we knocked out a few moments ago when, uh, we put that to the vote. The only difference is that the last sentence, um, is, uh, future use of Charles Hand consistent, yeah, no, it's actually almost, it's identical. It's identical to part two, uh, of councillor Holm, Holmes' motion. It's slightly...
Always has been, always will be.
Yeah, it will, thank you. So look, with part B one, that's definite. We have to remove any notion of affordable housing in Charles Hand Memorial Park from the final city plan. And affirms that housing will not be considered now in the future, well, in the future. That really is important. We've got to really not send that and lock that into concrete or make sure it, it gets the message across to the community. If we vote for part two and C, it means that sometime down the track, we may revisit this matter in two or three years with an engagement plan and consulting key stakeholders for the future use of Charles Hand Park. And that could bring back the actual affordable housing. And that could bring back the actual affordable housing and some other notion which would redevelop Charlesham Park to something which is contrary to what I believe is, is B one. I see council to endorse B as B one or B and not support B two and C. And that is in accordance with the consultation process. And I believe that's the way we ought to be heading and make that decision.
Any other colleagues wishing to make a contribution? Councillor Walker, thank you.
Thank you. And I'm not foreshadowing my alternate motion, but it is, it is hypothetically interesting to note that I, I think that that was just as much a decision as what we decided last meeting. We actually, my moting, my motion didn't have a point C. So it was just more explicit about taking out the, the housing on the site. And again, let me reinforce the fact that this is, the city heart is about putting an actual heart into the CBD as far as residents go. That is what I'm, I'm hoping the plan will go to. I'm wanting to see within our CBD, on the, on the current street frontages that we have, that, that we do go up stories. That's the perfect place for people to be living, close to services, close to transport and mercifully and hopefully, close to great public recreation areas. Living in an apartment, you're trading off a backyard, the trade-off should be a great place to recreate. And this is, this is the sticky bit of where we're at. We're actually pretty close. The work that's been done today by staff has been really good. And the community involvement has been, you know, very good. And certainly the, the high performance centre, I think, did put some visibility on to the Charlesham Park element. And, and that is what, what B one is acknowledging. And that's why I am supporting B one. And I'm supporting A. I guess we're doing A again. But I won't be supporting two for the reason that I don't, I don't impugn the intent of what it's trying to do. But I, I don't feel that we've nuanced enough and talked through and got the guardrails around the fact that we are proposing it to be predominantly open space. And I think if that's not in place there, then again, those that would like to see a little bit more concrete on the site, there's an avenue for that to potentially happen, even though the other bits there, because that'll be for a future council to decide. But we just haven't talked through the future well enough as a collective group for the areas that deserve, the parklands deserves, deserve us to really focus on the way forward. There is, you know, there is a concept and I guess if you're, you're put to C, then you are saying, yep, that's, we're moving to finalisation on that. But I've got to say, I don't know that everybody's at that point. The, the, the place to start is, as I say, is just to improve accessibility from the starting point. It's not going to, it's not going to have the cost implications that, that the current plan has either. Let just people just access it more, get used to it, then over time, other things could develop. But I, I have concerns that what the master plan does is say, this is, this is the new stuff we're putting in the area. And I'm not sure that everybody agree, never going to get everybody to agree with it, but it just seems an imprudent way forward. And that is what gives me concerns around point two and, and around point C. I ask you not to support those points. I ask you to reflect on that. We are not killing city heart at all. We are actually, we're actually getting some of the cholesterol out of it and getting rid of the arrhythmia. Please support just A and B one.
I might just call on the CEO to, to discuss part C, just to clarify that please, CEO.
Thank you, mayor. I thought it would be worth clarifying the intent of part C because it may be the case that councillors have read that in a particular way that's not clear on the intention. The intention of C was to authorize me to make those changes consistent with recommendation B, but to then bring the finalised plan back to council for approval. Just like every other plan, it should be considered in its final form and approved in its final form or not. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other colleagues? Councillor Kennedy, thank you.
Thank you, mayor. And I'll just throw another spatter in the works, I guess, right now. In all good consciousness, I can't support one when there could be an opportunity for a small amount of people to have some affordable housing. I can't with my social conscience. I can't. An amazing place like that with all the rest of the public open space that will be available. I don't think that I have the right to deny someone that opportunity. I'd just like to put that on the record. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Kennedy. Any other colleagues wishing to make a contribution? Councillor Chong, thank you.
A question, I think perhaps for the, for the deputy mayor in the write-up reply. My reading of those two paragraphs, one and two, is there's, there's an and in the middle. So if we remove the affordable housing in part one, we're then saying that whatever is thought about in two or three years' time must look at it as open space. So it's, because it's an and, it's not saying we'll revisit it in two or three years and go, well, well, now we changed our minds and we'll put housing in. That they need to be taken together is my feeling. Perhaps you could address that, my new, thank you.
Thank you. Any other colleagues wishing to make a contribution?
Before I call on the deputy mayor then, I wasn't going to, to talk to this particular motion, but I will now that because there's been some comments made this evening, I think are worth addressing. There's been extensive community consultations, we all know. We heard a strong message from the community about the importance of green space and diverse housing options within, within the city heart. We also had a workshop where officers sought direction from us, where there was a, a, a number of options put to us. One was to remove the social affordable housing aspect. And then the other one was to remove Charlesham Park. And as a result, that's why we had the recommendation for us this evening. Now, I appreciate that this is where decisions are made. That's where guidance is and advice is, is a sort. But other key themes from this extensive consultation included desire for improved community facilities such as playgrounds, barbecue areas and event spaces, opportunities to address parking availability and traffic congestion, particularly in Belreven and Rosney, recognition, as I said before, of Aboriginal heritage and its role in shaping the city's identity, support for better public transport and active transport options while maintaining car parking access. And at page one seventy-one of our agenda item at two point one nine, a call for a more vibrant night time economy and expanded retail hospitality and cultural opportunities. Council, we have this evening had the opportunity to carefully consider the feedback that we've received from our community and to finalise city heart plan, including all the concerns that had been raised with us during that extensive consultation process. We need to remain committed to developing a plan that reflects the needs and aspirations of our community. Now, this is an evolving plan. It's not set in stone. We need to be agile. We need to be responsive to the needs of our community. Because as we know, what is the case today won't be the same in two, three, five, ten years' time. This provides us the direction that we need to deliver the city heart that the city of Clarence absolutely deserves. And I'm telling you now, we need, and we need it desperately. And that's what came through from our community. So I urge you all, please, support the motion before us this evening.
Deputy mayor, you write a reply please.
Thank you, sir mayor. In responding to, I think, what will essentially be the contributions from councillor James and councillor Chong in respect of, and councillor Walker concerning B two and the way that reads, it's actually not remotely consistent with the motion put forward by councillor Hume in that councillor Hume's motion was clearly opening the door for a housing option to be discussed in the future. This one is not about that in any way, shape or form. If I thought it was, I wouldn't be standing here supporting this motion. It is read together. So it is definitely about removing housing as a future option. And of course, enabling though, discussions, for example, with the college, with perhaps the Rosney Park Tennis Club, other stakeholders, in a fashion that's suitable as part of the current zoning as, as open space that exists there. I think that's more than reasonable for that type of opportunity to be available into the future. It doesn't give me any cause for alarm. If it did, I wouldn't be standing here supporting this motion as somebody who strongly supports the removal of the housing aspect of it. Now, I'm also not troubled by the fact that this need to wait, no. I think we need to get on. As the mayor said, I think our community expects us to show leadership. We've been a long way down the aisle towards the altar and I think we just need to get on. That, I don't have any concern that there aren't opportunities in the future to be agile, to address opportunities as they are presented, to continue. I mean, that's what council does on a daily basis. Continues to listen to its community, as I'm sure, whether it's this council or a future council, they will be nimble enough to, to, to make adjustments as and when, when required on something as large a scale as this. But you have to start somewhere. And now is the time for us to do that. We can't continue to spin our wheels over and over again. We need to provide the council staff with that sufficient direction to get on with the work as well. So I have a lot of comfort in what we're proposing here, bearing in mind it's going to be coming back yet again. This is not the final draft. That's yet to be presented to us. So I think we don't want to get bogged down in arguments that are not particularly germane. And I would say there are lots of other opportunities for housing options in the city heart plan. Many people that responded opposing the Charlesham Park housing option were deeply committed to other forms of housing being available, as am I. And I think that those things will bear out positively into the community as well, but in the rights, in the right places for them. I seek support.
Thank you. Well, colleagues, I'll put the, the motion's recommendation, there's been a call for it to be at Sereatum, knowing that part A has already been voted on and accepted by this, this body. I'll put part B, part B one. All those in favour? Those against? Abstaining? Thank you. So carried. B two, all those in favour? Those against? And that's lost. Part C, all those in favour? Those against? That's carried. Colleagues, will we have a decision? Thank you very much. Moving on to motions on notice, councillor Goiney's not here, that's been deferred. Moving now to item ten, questions on notice. There are no, sorry, council's question time, there are no questions on notice. Answers to questions without notice, previous council meeting, as listed in the agenda. Moving on to ten point four, questions without notice. Are there any questions from the floor, starting this evening with the deputy mayor, councillor Ritchie?
My question relates to the capacity of council to respond to abandoned trolleys. I'm aware that the supermarkets and other businesses provide trolley tracker numbers for people to call. My concern specifically though relates to community concerns when many phone calls have been made to collect trolleys and they go unanswered or unresponded to. Is there a point at which council can take an action, whether it's to penalise the relevant business for not responding or any other head of power that council has to respond to a lack of action on the part of those relevant businesses?
Thank you, deputy mayor. Sereatum please.
Thank you, mayor. Thank you for the question, deputy mayor. I'll respond to this, this question in a couple of parts. Of course, there's some things that we can do and there's some things I might need to take on notice. As things currently stand, the, as you, many will be aware, the relevant supermarkets do have numbers in place that you can, you can call to report trolleys that have been dumped. I've been in contact with various staff today and we do occasionally collect trolleys and either return those to the relevant shopping centre or store them at the depot for, for collection later. But that's the exception, not the norm. And that's sort of comes really where we find those trolleys dumped in parks and not collected over a few days. Thinking about the issue, the piece I will, sorry, take one step back. In respect to those numbers that are available to contact the supermarket chains, we've had a discussion today in, in expectation of this question. And like some other councils, we'll move to put those numbers up on our website in the same sort of area that we have contact details for, Taz Water, Taz Networks and so forth. So we think that will be a step to assist people to take that first step and report. The P, the section I'd like to take on notice and we will report back is that we believe that there's an opportunity under the public places bylaw to treat trolleys as an object. And in those circumstances, objects that are dumped in a public place can be collected and dealt with later. What we'll need to do is have some discussion with the relevant supermarkets about what the timeframe for that is. So in fairness, that we do provide an opportunity for the, the supermarkets to deal with that effectively. And then after that period of time, what, what will happen at our end. So I'll take that, that portion on notice, deputy mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Mulder, do you have a question this evening?
Yep. I refer to the deputy mayor's brochure announcing future community council meetings, whatever they are. Who paid for these brochures? Who authorised these community council meetings? And who is paying for the hall hire?
Thank, are you, are you comfortable to, to answer that question? Deputy mayor, thank you.
Me, me and me.
Councillor Mulder, second question?
Have these brochures been distributed outside the electorate of Edinburgh?
Deputy mayor?
Yes.
Councillor Hunter?
No, thanks.
Councillor Hume?
Thank you, mayor. I have two questions. First one relates to an excellent document that the council has called the Access and Inclusion Assessment Toolkit, which is used to inform accessibility and inclusion in council developments. I understand that the toolkit is being applied. My question is, for the sake of accountability, I guess, would it be possible to indicate in reports, say on council agendas where developments, council developments are being designed, that the toolkit has been used in or applied in, in that design?
Do you have your question, Sereatum?
Can I just clarify through you, mayor? Are you talking about council projects? Or, or private projects? I can, I can assure you that they are applied in council projects.
But for clarity, you're wanting that actually in the report?
Question is, could, could we have that say in reports where council projects are being put to, put to council?
Particular reports in mind? I'm just not sure which, what the line of reporting is, councillor Hume?
So for example, reports on council agendas, so if we're, say, approving a design of a council
Oh, okay.
You know, to just say in the report that this has been produced in accordance with the
Applying the Access and Inclusion Toolkit.
Thank you for clarifying that. Yes, is the short answer.
Thank you.
Second question relates to the site assessments that supposedly informed the Tasmanian government's flawed decision on the location of the High Performance Centre. You indicated in response to a question in a previous council meeting that the question, I believe from councillor Warren was, will the council apply for these documents under right to information? I think your answer was not, not at this point. What would be the, I guess, the preconditions or the triggers for making that application?
Through you, mayor. Thank you for the question. A, a direction from council that, that those, those documents were sought, whether that was either via a notice of motion or by some other means, and I'm not entirely sure what that would be. But some, some direction from council that there was a desire to go down the RTI path. It's not a path that we would normally take with the state government. So some, some direction or desire to do that would, would really be what I was looking for. Thank you.
Councillor James, do you have a question?
Yes, I have too. Thank you, Mr Mayor. The first one is in relation to the boulevard development. This matter has
This matter has been, as I understand it, on hold. Originally, there was 86 apartments and then has been discussion about a reduction in those to another number and I can't recall what that is. So my question is, when will council receive the new DA? A new DA? And to be presented to council, please.
Thank you, Mr Ma. Thank you.
Through you, Mayor. Thank you, councillor James, for the question. Documentation has been lodged, but further information has been sought prior to council consent because it involves council's land. That documentation has not yet been submitted and I don't know when it will. When it's submitted, then we'll be putting the matter through the CEO for council consent to be able to then launch the public consultation phase of the DA. So as soon as possible, sir, but I'm not 100% sure when.
Thank you, Mr Ma. Second question, councillor James?
Second question is, I'm all favour of community involvement. So my question refers to the leaflet that's been sent out to the community and it has the words 'community council meeting dates'. So my question is that the Harrah Community Centre is going to be used for this consultation for council meeting with the community as well as the Linus Farn Activity Centre for a council community meeting. Is there some means by which approval has to be sought from the CEO's consent for the use of council buildings for the purposes of a member of the council holding a community council meeting on those premises? And if what the process is and how much is the fee, please?
Before I call on anyone to answer the question, I'll just remind colleagues of how we started this term, which is about bringing out best selves to this chamber. And I'd also remind people, and you can pull as many faces as you like here, but I will not accept questions in this chamber that make personal comments or impute an improper motive to any other councillor. And that's what we've seen this evening from two questions in this place, in my view. It's unacceptable. We're happy to answer the question, but these questions could have been just a phone call or an email.
Well, I did.
Not to grandstand.
No, it's not that.
Seeking to impugn someone's reputation, I won't respond. So it's unacceptable, but there's nothing to hide here. But again, bring your best self. So I'll ask the deputy mayor to respond and then I'll invite the CEO if he wishes to add anything else. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Can I say I'm delighted that my colleagues are interested in the hard work I'm doing in the city of Clarence? I've personally funded at my own expense calendars, hardware surveys, community catch-ups. To go to the heart of your question, I've had to go through and apply and book as any other member of the public is entitled to do through those hall booking systems. I pay like any other member of the public is required to do. So just to be perfectly clear, no special advantage at all, sought nor given, as it shouldn't be. I've been very particular. All the forms and paperwork have been filled out and completed for the halls that are required that are operated by council or indeed for those that are not. So I'm happy to be fully open and transparent in the way that I go about my business. The way I conduct myself and always have done, regardless of what role I've ever had in the community, is to be one to make myself as open and as accessible as possible. I'll continue to do that. And by the way, colleagues are welcome to come to the councillor catch-ups, should they have the time to attend any of them, to make themselves available to any community members that should seek to come along.
CEO, do you wish to add anything else to that?
Thank you, Mayor. Only to the extent that part of councillor James' question was whether there's any CEO approval required. The short answer to that is no. Just like any other person, councillors can apply to use council halls and facilities as the deputy mayor has set out. Thank you.
Councillors will also be aware of a recent integrity commission finding as well regarding another council. So everything's above board here. Everything's above board. Councillor Walker?
Thank you, Mayor. My first question is in relation to a former councillor and frequent viewer of the meeting proceedings. In fact, it's not on her behalf, but it's her granddaughter's behalf. In relation to the Belray Beach Park, there's a water play feature and the pump is currently broken. Is there any likelihood that this can be rectified in the not too distant future?
Mr Graham?
Very much, Mayor. I'll take that one on notice and try and see if we can inform council this week on that item.
Thank you. Councillor Walker?
Second question is that this meeting marks the two year anniversary of council terminating the process for the land opener of the Kangaroo Bay Hotel Site to continue advancing their proposal, which was to transform the night time economy in Clarence, amongst other things. My question is, how many more years do we anticipate the site will remain a gravel car park behind Cyclone Warr?
CEO, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. As councillors will be aware, we're currently involved in a litigation process that's going through the usual procedural steps of discovery at this point in time. We're anticipating having a court date, hopefully around mid-year to have that matter heard. Up until a decision is made, it's difficult to say what the ultimate timeframe will be and what the next steps will be after that.
Thank you, CEO. Councillor Darker? Councillor Warren?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'd like to thank deputy mayor for letterboxing me and inviting me to your council meetings, your community council meetings, and also for your clarification that I'd be welcome to attend those as a councillor, as well as a rate payer. My question is, is this something you've done in the past? Because I haven't heard about it before. And I'm wondering in the first two years of our term, whether you ran these meetings because I don't believe councillors were aware of any such invitation in the past.
Actually, I'm not going to accept that question. As I said before, we can bring in best selves this place. You could have picked up the phone and asked that question, councillor Warren. I'm not going to have. This uses an opportunity to grandstand in the way that you're doing now. No, no, I've just. Councillor Warren, I've just ruled the question out of order. Your second question, please.
Thank you. No, that's.
Councillor Chong? Councillor Kennedy? Thank you, all right. Well, that being the case, ladies and gentlemen, we now move to item 11, which is call for a motion to move into closed meeting. Is there a mover, please? Thank you, councillor Chong. Second, councillor Kennedy. I'll put the motion. All those in favour?
That's unanimous, thank you. Before I do say goodbye to everyone that's viewing us on the live stream and those here in the gallery, I'd like to thank particularly councillor Kennedy, councillor Chong, Miss Shea, Mr Graham and Mr Brennan, all sporting green today. I wish everyone a Saint, Happy Saint Patrick's Day. And thank you to those members of the public too that have attended this evening in person or via the live stream. We'll see you again in three weeks' time. I hope you're enjoying your Saint Patrick's Day.